We're ready, let's get going. Welcome, everyone. It is September 23rd, 2024. This is a regular business meeting, the Billings City Council. Welcome, everyone. If anybody does not have a copy of our agenda and you'd like one, there's one back on the cart there. We'll have opportunities for public comments throughout the meeting. We'll kind of explain that when we get there. But before we do, if you would, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and our invocation by Councilmember Kennedy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. I pray for this council meeting tonight. Give the council members wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on items before them. May every decision be righteous in your sight for our benefit and for your glory, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Denise, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Shaw?
Here.
Gulick?
Here.
Neese?
Present.
Owen?
Here.
Joy?
Present.
Kennedy?
Here.
Aspen Leiter?
Here.
Tidswell? Boyet? Repsis?
Mayor Cole?
Here. Councilmember Shaw is with us online. Councilmember, as always, if we fail to see your hand go up, please feel free to just say something to get our attention. We apologize in advance if that happens. First item on our agenda, council, are our minutes. We have both sets from August 26th and September 9th. Is there a motion, discussion concerning one or either or both of the minutes? Councilmember Gulick?
I move to approve both the August, the minutes from both August 26th, 2024, as well as September 9th, 2024.
Second by Councilmember Boyet. Any discussion? Councilmember Neese?
Mayor, the September 9th minutes came in late, late to us, the Saturday afternoon, and I just wanted to hear from our city attorney on what that, that particular, where the motion without a second was, whether or not that is a void motion, or does that mean the items don't open, or how is that? I know we're going to look at it tonight again, but I just wanted to hear from the city attorney how that plays out as far as the standing of that.
Thank you, Councilmember Neese, mayor and council. What I would say about that is, it was, it's most definitely an irregularity, but the cure for that is actually happening tonight anyways, because you're, that issue is before you again substantively. So while there wasn't an official second, using the term "second" that motion, there clearly was somebody who would have seconded it. I went back and listened to Councilmember Boyet, and he, in essence, seconded that motion with the other words that he used. He was advocating, he was in favor of that. So looking back at that, the mayor would have likely recognized, in my opinion, the mayor would have likely recognized that as a second, even though there's the irregularity. So I think that, either way, tonight, council's action will cure any defect in the record.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, we proceed to a vote. The motion's for approval of both sets, as amendment, that most recent one on the September 9th, as distributed by the clerk. If in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 If opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Council courtesies, do we have any council courtesies this evening? Councilmember Joy?
Thank you, mayor and council. So at the council table and on the table, on the cart in the back, there are brochures for the Billings area Family Violence Task Force, and they are going to do the 35th Annual McGuire Memorial Conference on Family Violence on September 26th and September 27th. That's a Thursday and a Friday. The conference will cover surviving secondary trauma families to first responders. So the areas of discussion and panel discussion is on secondary trauma. So if anyone is interested, there's some on the cart in the back, and each council member has a copy. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Repsis?
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to recognize the efforts of the Partners for Parks Foundation. This past week was the third annual mayor's luncheon for Parks Excellence, and so thank you, mayor, for participating in that and for yours and Anne's generous donation to the cause there. The luncheon and the associated raffle raised over $40,000 to go into the park system. One of the focus projects was solar lighting to increase safety in the parks. And then there was a raffle that raised monies for projects going on all over the community, from Poly Vista Park to Colson Park to High Sierra Dog Park, Dealer Park, and even out at Project Little League, their ball fields out there. So I thank you to the Partners for Parks Foundation and mayor for your support of our park system.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Repsis, for your efforts in originating and continuing to drive that event forward. Councilmember Aspen Leiter?
So a couple weeks ago, Billings hosted the six-man challenge football match up at Rocky. We had two teams from Texas come up. Great football, Texas whooped us, unfortunately. But if you, if you've never seen that before, I'd encourage you to go do it. I think this is going to start to become an annual event. It was a great opportunity for folks from Texas to see our city, got a tremendous amount of compliments on billings from those folks, as I sat over on the Texas side, just to talk to them. The one thing that I did want to highlight, though, is I, Rocky Mountain Football Team had a buy that weekend, and their kids were down on the football field, running water, running the chains, and on both sidelines. And just to see those Rocky Mountain Football Players interacting with those high school kids and being encouraging and high-fiving kids coming off, I think it's a testament to what's going on at Rocky, the culture that's there, coming straight from the top, leadership with Dr. Wilmeth, down to the football coach and that team. So I think we don't highlight those things enough, and, you know, that's a fine example of kids in our community helping other kids, and it was great to see, so.
Very good. Thank you for reminding us of that. Councilmember Owen?
Thank you, mayor. My courtesy is a little bit less chipper, unfortunately. I just wanted to take a moment and recognize our friends and neighbors in the Billings community throughout Yellowstone County and into Stillwater County, who are reeling from the impacts of the Stillwater Mine layoff announcement. We know that we're going to see that kind of ripple effect throughout the community. There will be lots of rapid response efforts and career fairs. So if Billings employers are looking for good people to hire, please be on the lookout for those job fairs, and let's make sure that our friends in Columbus and Stillwater County, and then here in Yellowstone County as well, are able to keep working and to overcome this. But I just want to take a moment and recognize that community that's really in shock right now.
Very good, thank you. Any other council courtesies? Okay, we'll move on, then, to council reports. Any council reports from organizations that you serve on, on behalf of the council? Seeing none, city administrator report, Chris?
Yeah, mayor and council, I've got a half a dozen different items here we'll walk through. The first one is just a recognition, recognizing, clarifying something for the record relative to Consent Agenda Item 1F. That's the Home ARP, Supportive Service Project. We don't need to pull it off consent, we don't need to change the motion, but we do want to be clear for the record that if the council leaves it on consent, it does provide the mayor with authority to sign the sub-recipient agreements allocating the proceeds as is defined in the memo and in the packet. So, again, just to be clear, the Community Development Board, the Community Development Staff recommends council give the mayor authority to sign sub-recipient agreements to allocate $100,000 each in Home Investment Partnership American Rescue Plan program, funding to the following sub-recipient organizations, and those were all detailed out in the memo, to manage supportive service projects for qualifying populations. The supportive services provided by each sub-recipient organization is summarized below and is there in the packet. So the key, the key tweak there is it didn't say specifically authorizing the mayor to sign those sub-recipient agreements. So we just want to clarify that for the record. Second is to remove Consent Agenda Item 1E. We will bring that back to you. That is the MOU regarding between ourselves, Par 3, and the cemetery adjacent there. The third item, it sounds like, and there was, I know there was some interest about 10 days ago, but it didn't come up today, at least in conversations I was with, and that was that the last consent item, that's Consent Agenda Item M, that's our legislative priorities for the next session, that some have wanted that taken off of consent and moved to the last action item. So up to you guys if you want to do that, but that was talked about earlier. Some good news, want to be, thanks to our Building Division, Public Works, and our Fire Marshal's Office. All city departments have reviewed the short-term hold jail facility. Those have gone back and forth. The first set of reviews were given. We've gotten them back about a week ago. All of those things have been approved, so the ball is squarely in their court. All approvals through all divisions, departments of the city are finalized at this stage. Item four, no ex parte communication. And then, last but not least, I'd like to have Victoria, our public information officer, Victoria's going to give, cover our communication efforts relative to the utility billing, and Jennifer DeRae is going to provide an update on where we are as we continue to work our way through that challenging software conversion. So if I could, mayor, turn it over to Victoria, and she'll hand it off to Jennifer, and that'll cover my admin report. Thank you.
Hello. Is this mic on? Is this on?
It's a little green light on.
If the green is on, that means go. Okay. Well, good evening. I'm happy to be here in front of you. Big fans, I watch you guys all the time, so thanks for having me. Yeah, like Chris said, I'm here to talk about some of the communication efforts going on behind the utility billing, because there's a lot of questions, of course, and concerns, and especially talk on social media. So let's take a look here. So where are we sharing information? We're getting it out on social media. We have it on our website, both on the Public Works website and the City of Billings main website. Easy to find, billingsmt.gov. You just go to the top and you see in the alert bar, Public Works Utility FAQs, and also in our Magic City Spotlight, so it has a couple different homes. We've also had some media coverage on what's going on, and I believe by all local media outlets as well. So all around covered, and then also, of course, people are going into the Bellnap office in person to ask questions or over the phone. So we're just trying to cover everything possible, so if anyone has questions, they can get their answers. All right, so what is it that we're sharing? We, at this point, want to give customers the knowledge and tools and information that they need to, I guess, if you want to call it investigate their bill, because there's a lot of disbelief on how much people owe right now. And so when we put out these FAQs, we were basically building up a list of like, okay, you want to check this, this, and this. And so along with that, there's tutorial videos that we've made. If you're not into the video thing, you can follow the step-by-step directions that's available with photos and text. And then also, if you just go to billingsmt.gov/waterbillfaq, that's the link to what I was just talking about, and there's a little snapshot of it there on the screen. So, one of the videos that we made, how to check for a leak. Customers, some are being told that they have a leak, and they, when they picture a leak, they think of like a puddle of water somewhere, which is not always the case. The leak could be a slow leak in the toilet. And so we wanted to give customers the ability to be able to look at their water meter and see if it's moving. Okay, so if it's not moving, obviously no water's being used, but if you think you're not using any water and you see your water meter moving, then you have a leak somewhere. So again, it's not going to be a puddle on your lawn, or in your crawl space, or in your basement, it could be water flowing through the toilet. So, let's see here. I did talk to Public Works about one customer's bill, and just to give an example of how much of a difference a leak can make, this specific customer's leak added an additional $50 to their bill. So it adds up, every little drop counts. So, let's see here. And so on the left there, that's what the video looks like, and then on the right, it's the step-by-step for both old meters and new meters, because there's the two different types out there. Another video we made, video and guide, how to manage utilities online, step-by-step as well. It's funny, because I was talking to Chris about this just a little while ago in the office, and one of my coworkers overheard, and she was able to figure out how to log in online. She has her paper bill, but she's never logged in online, so she was able to log in online and take a closer look at her bill and how it all adds up. So we want people to be able to use that, because some folks are either just paying in person, or over the phone, or they just do the quick pay. But if you create the account and you have your account number, you can go in online and take a deeper look. We also have some information graphics from the EPA, just to let people know how big of a difference a leak can make in your home, and then also saving some water, even though we're heading into fall now, in the summer months, that water really does peak. And so one of the facts that I got from the EPA graphic, it says 10% of homes have leaks that waste 90 gallons or more per day. So, again, it all adds up. Okay, there we go. Notification signup. So previously, on the website, you were able to use Water Smart to sign up for notifications. Maybe you have a leak, or maybe a lot of water's being used, and you want to know about that. So this is just a snapshot of when you do log in, and this is what you're going to see. So you log in, and you click on the "I want to" dropdown, that's in the upper right-hand corner. You sign up for leak alerts, and so that's one of the lines there, you want to click, and then you'll be able to select what kind of alerts you want to get. There's everything from leak alerts, high water usage, forecasted high bill, and then it'll also alert you if you want to set a notice for exceeding a certain amount of gallons of water. So those are all options, and you can do that through text message or email. So the options are there. And last but not least, this goes back to the disbelief, people wondering how did I use so much water? This is just a snapshot of the past year's precipitation, and this comes from the National Weather Service website. If you want to look at July, this goes from July of 2020 to this past July and August. So this past July and August had the lowest amount of precipitation over the past four years. So water tends to go up, of course, when there's less rain out. So that's exactly what we're seeing, and 29% of water usage, I think you guys might have heard this already, but has gone up. It's been a 29% increase of water usage from throughout the city. So that's, yeah, that's my presentation on communication efforts. I also want to mention that Public Works is working on, and I guess, an online search. So if you want to go back and look at previous year's bills, you can type in your account number, and then you'll be able to see what you've paid in the past, because, like I said, these past couple years, we haven't needed to water much outside, it's been, precipitation had been great. And so if you're able to look back historically and see, okay, I did pay a little more this year because less precipitation, then you'll be able to kind of make a comparison there. That's the point of that. So I also want to thank Xiaoi with Public Works, the communications and project coordinator. She's been awesome to work with, and we've done a lot of collaborating on these ideas and how to get this messaging out. So you guys have any questions, or no?
It looks like we do, and I hope you can answer them. If not, you can send them over to Jennifer, because we'll still hear from Jennifer. Councilmember Kennedy?
Yeah, Victoria, there was a rate increase this year, but nothing shows that. You're talking about leakage and everything, but there wasn't any. And the other thing is, has everyone now received their bill?
That's a question for Jennifer, I will leave her to that. And as far as the rate increases, I know that information had been shared with you guys in the past, so I was just trying to focus on what kind of messaging and communication efforts have been going on.
I think it needs to be involved in there, so people understand it's not just a leakage or time of year or whatever, but there was an increase in their water rates, too.
And that is one of the FAQs, listed on the FAQs. It explains that, if you go to the website and...
So they have to search for it?
No, if you, that website, the address that I gave you, it's a further breakdown. Oh, wow, there it is. It's 15 different frequently asked questions, and so it explains that, so.
And Chris wanted to comment, that's been in all the newspaper ads that I've seen.
It is, but just to be clear for the record tonight, so you are correct, Councilmember Kennedy, and so what we've emphasized in round numbers is if they used exactly the same amount of water last year to this year, they would have seen about a 15% increase. About half of that related to the actual increase in their water utility rates, the other part related to the fact that their storm water bill used to be on their property tax bill and now is on their utility bill. So if they happen to be a customer who's using exactly the same amount of water, then yes, they would experience about a 15% increase. I want to be clear that this 29% has nothing to do with an adjustment in the rate. That's just how much more water is flowing through the water plant and going out to customers, because like myself, when we've had all these 100-degree days, we've been, some, lots of people have been running their irrigation systems longer. But I just want to be clear, that was not a 29% increase, and the rates don't go up based on the fact that we have a dry year. I mean, our rate structure is not tied to the dryness or wetness of the year, but we absolutely see a correlation between dry years and wet years, as far as how much water people utilize.
Just one other follow-up, Victoria. This came after the fact, after we had our, the changeover to the billing system and all of that. What do you have planned on anything else that may come up that's a major change, such as the billing or anything else, so you can be out ahead of it for the public, then wait until after it hits a fan, and then we're doing this?
Yeah.
So what do you have planned?
So the other item I would like to create is literally a video that walks people through, okay, I'm customer A, and this was my water bill, and adding those rate increases and the other fees, and so helping people to see, okay, I can apply my personal numbers in this way. So that's something else that I have on my list of things I'd like to do to add to the information we're putting out there. But yeah, this whole thing has been fluid, and we had stuff out there, and then as time goes on, things keep changing, and we're trying to add on to it.
But what I'm asking for is not just, not just the water, but what do you have in your docket now, so you can stay upfront and make sure that we get news articles and everything out before something else like this happens, just so we can stay a few feet ahead of a problem?
I mean, I've been in better contact with Public Works, and so we're just going to keep working together on, you know, moving forward.
The broader piece, I would say, Councilmember Kennedy, is that Victoria is a part of our weekly tactical meeting, and she's a part of our strategic team, so that as we're working through issues, and this one certainly has shown us what we didn't do, not anticipating the kind of problems we've had at this level, to not repeat those, not repeat that assumption going forward. So as we look forward with changes, we've got some changes coming in our Building Division this winter that we're anticipating, we have a number of customers who work off of that system, builders, contractors, as to what we can do to be more proactive, and then we will have to react to the things we didn't anticipate as we work our way through. So, thank you.
Okay, why don't we move to, okay, something else for Victoria before we go to Jennifer? And then maybe Jennifer can address the possibility of future changes in Public Works and what we might have learned for those if they're, if you have things planned for the future. But Councilmember Neese?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Jennifer, I think, thank you for answering Councilmember Kennedy's question, because actually, that's actually what I was kind of asking for, because I think early on I asked, well, how can we get the customers to really calculate their own rate? It's pretty complicated and that, and so how long do you expect it to be before that happens? Because I know that Public Works has published that document, they can go look up their water bill, and I can't remember now, I did go to it, I can't remember, it actually has the meter readings and things like that out of it. But I think we need to, we need to restore the public trust because of this error, then, and they need to probably see it for themselves, and it needs to be simple and easy to understand, because if, and fortunately for me, I'm on the Heights Water District, so I didn't get this error. But I would like to, if it was me, I'd want to make sure that I can look at my past bills, the actual gallons calculated, the actual what the meter readings were, and then do the math myself, because I'm not so sure I trust now what those readings were, because I couldn't get them in the past. And so when will that type of thing be happening, so the public can actually do it themselves and kind of show that they, this is really what I used?
I'm not sure on a timeline on that. I think that'd be best to come from Public Works, because they're actually in the trenches getting all that information and data together. But exactly, I want to, kind of like a math problem when you're in school, you have it on the board, and you're like, okay, here's your set of numbers, this is everything you need, plug it into the equation, and you'll be able to see for yourself, but that's exactly what my goal would be with creating something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, let's turn over to Jennifer.
Thanks, guys. Good evening, mayor and council. First thing I want to correct is there is not an error. There's not an error in the billing, and we need to get that out there, because that message keeps going out to the customers, and there's not an actual error in the billing. We did send letters out and do some upfront work ahead of the conversion, but no one did anticipate it would be as it did roll out with the delays that we had. So I just want to give you a quick update on where we're at right now. So last week, we sent out the last cycle, the last main water cycle, Cycle 4. It's our biggest cycle. Those who are receiving just print bills have probably not received those yet, it'll probably start hitting the mailboxes tomorrow, but there were a lot of people able to look up their bills online this weekend and see them now. We also have Heights Water District customers, those are sewer, garbage, storm-only customers. Those have not gone out. We are ready on our end to send them out, they're all ready to go. These are the 60-day bills for that cycle, and we are waiting on our vendor Vertex 1 to make a couple corrections, we just have to recalc, and those will be ready to go. We sent out the 90-day bills for some of our customers last week. We have all the others ready to go. Again, we're waiting on our vendor Vertex 1. We're ready on our end. I think the most frustrating thing throughout this whole process has been waiting for Vertex 1 to respond to the fixes. I did have a meeting with their COO and their Director of Support and Project Rollout last, I think it was Tuesday, to go over our frustrations about how this has gone so far. They did agree to send two people up here to help us work through the rest of it, and they drove up today. Will be here through the rest of this week to try to get us back on track. We should be, we should have billed Cycle 1 in 13, or Cycle 1 in 11, two weeks ago, and then Cycle 2 in 12 last week. So we're still a couple weeks behind, but our plan is to get right back on track with those as we're getting through this. The biggest delay has been all the manual things that we've had to do, and then waiting on the vendor to do, because we're not letting the system run as designed. As soon as we can get back on track, everything should actually work right without all this manual work. And so we're going to be actually sending out the next round of their bills pretty quickly, so people are going to be getting bill on top of bill. Again, no late fees, no shut-offs are happening at this time, so people do have time to pay those if they're, you know, in a bind. We're going to work with people. Payment plans will happen once we start actually doing that collection process, but we're not even in the planning stage of starting that process at this point. So people have several months to get caught up on that. Other than that, I think we don't have any other updates.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Gulick.
Thank you, mayor. Jennifer, just had a couple of questions that were probably for the public just to know. One of the questions is, why was the, why did...
for the public just to know. One of the questions is, why was the, why did we make the change in the software in the first place? So you can speak to that, and then I'll ask the second one after you've had a chance on that one.
Sure, good question. We have it in our FAQs also, because we're getting that a lot, but there were several things that our old system could not do. In fact, moving us forward with asset management was one of them, could not connect to our GIS, could not get us to the point where we could actually look at the system and be able to look at future investments and make sure that we're not investing too much, but we're investing when we need to do that. So it was really to get us ready for the future. There was a lot of reporting issues with the old system that we could not do. And then the other thing that has happened with the old system is that our meter readings go in, and we cannot bill for two weeks. That process takes so long. This system was designed to get meter readings in and kick them out right away, so that's why the system is not working as designed. But eventually, we can get to the point where meter readings are going in, and we bill the week later, which actually helps people see what they're using much quicker. Of course, they can go online to do that, too, but it helps when they get that bill.
Okay, great. Follow-up question?
Councilmember Gillick?
And the other question I've gotten from a constituent who has, it's a landlord who has multiple properties in town and, and expressing frustration with, I think, I guess, the search engine, like having to have a, part of it, I'm sure, is just it's a new system, they have to get used to it, but being able to locate their properties and having to have just a very precise way of inputting the, the information, and maybe this is handled in the FAQ, but is there any possibility of enhancing the search engine capability with the Vertex, or is it just something that they're going to have to learn how to do, use a new system?
So Councilmember Gillick, it's, it's kind of the same system that we used to have. Vertex owns Water Smart, so we just went to the new version of that. So it's really the same system where they enter in their account numbers, or not their account numbers, but their username and password. They do have to set it up for each account. There are summary customers, and I'm not sure if that's what you're talking about, where somebody maybe have a summary bill for a bunch of different properties, and that will be better under this system, where they can actually get just one summary bill.
Okay, thank you. Further questions? Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes, I want to talk about the storm water and how it came off of the property tax bill and went on to their monthly bill. Number one, the timing is not the best right now, but, and I, I think we should have probably looked at that to, if we're going to make a major change, not doing that. But the question I have, and I've gotten quite a few calls from renters in my area, and the renters now have seen, because they pay the water and the garbage fee as a renter, they now have the storm water fee, which was, had been picked up by the landlord, because it was on the property taxes. So we saw a shift from one to the other. I wish I would have known about that ahead of time, so we could have had a talk about that, because I didn't realize that we were going to force a shift onto the renter. It's been a problem.
Mayor and Council, we did have those discussions early this year when we were having those, those meetings and the work sessions about moving the storm fee to the utility bill. I think that was back in February, March, maybe, where we discussed that that could be a factor, that technically the landlord should be reducing their rent, and then they will be paying the storm fee in the utility bill, but we can't guarantee that will happen. So we did have those discussions. I know the timing was bad. We did plan on having this conversion, though, in February, and that was our first go-live date.
I'm having some problems with it, and maybe that was something that Victoria probably should have written about and had out there ahead of time before it took place.
Well, I would say that for this, for water and wastewater, those fees were set two years ago. And so was the timing great to do it right after this conversion? Of course not. But to actually repeal those rates and do something else, you have to go through a whole public process to do that. And we didn't know anything would be like it is until June, so we didn't have time to actually repeal that back. And same with storm. We would have had to come back with the public hearing and all those, those timeframes to, to change the dates that we started that.
Jennifer, I'm going to recognize Councilmember Boyet, but I'm just going to ask you if you wanted to comment on Councilmember Kennedy's earlier question about, is there anything in the future that we haven't maybe rolled out yet that we want to start working on educating the, the public about and addressing, being proactive on?
We are doing no changes ever again.
[laughing] Okay.
Completely accurate. She knows, she's being adjusted. But as far as software changes, that certainly this better last for some decade or longer. Every other year, we set utility rates for two years, so certainly ways of pushing out information relative to the various media sources are things we can do, because as Jennifer mentioned, we've known that, that 15% number, that's been known for more than a year. So that could have been, that's something we could have pushed out stronger ahead of time for folks to see.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Councilmember Boyet.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to give you a little praise. I've talked to four different people at the Public Works over the last few months, and I want to say how nice the people were, how intelligent they were, how pleasant they were, and they solved my problems. So I have to give you some praise there. The people do good work.
Thank you. I'll pass that on.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Neese?
Thank you, Mayor. Jennifer, thank you for correcting that. You're right, it's a perceived error, because so far you've done, I don't know, it lasted, I knew, 4,000, but probably more than that by now as far as, and you haven't found a single error in the billing yet. Is that correct?
We have not. You know, the thing that we could not have anticipated is that the thing that people would have a problem with, with the billing, is their consumption, and the fact that they think their consumption is wrong. And, you know, we've said it many times, we've put that out in press releases, the meter system hasn't changed, the meter infrastructure, the software, it's all the same. It, it is, as Chris said, it's up over last year. What we are trying to get out, and hopefully we have tonight, we're ready to go, with previous consumption numbers. Right now, we have 2023 online, but we're, we have 2020 through 2022 ready to go, just working through some legal issues and IT issues. So we want to get that on there so that people can look back, because what we see is that if you look back at 2023 and 2022, which were cooler, wetter summers, you are higher this year. But if you go back to 2021, it's, it's usually right in line with that.
Okay, great. That answers my other question, but I also want to agree with Councilmember Boyet. I personally did call the Public Works Department, and although the hold times were a bit longer, the, the people were very, very helpful and that. So you've got a good team there. So thank you.
Good to hear.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Rowan?
Thank you, Mayor. Jennifer, if you could just address, you've said the meters haven't changed, the meter reading software hasn't changed, none of that piece has, but I see, I've seen in emails to me and I've seen on social media posts, a lot of customers, or at least a number of customers, when they're calling or being told they have unexpected higher levels of use specifically between the hours of 2:00 and 6:00 a.m. And I see people repeating that a lot. I'm being told it's between 2:00 and 6:00, but I haven't changed my sprinkler system. I don't know, you know. So why are people specifically being told of that timeframe being out of whack?
The first thing I want to get across, and I'll say this carefully, but I just urge people to be very careful as to what they read on social media. So we have gone and we've checked every person in every one of those posts. Some of them we can't tie out to accounts, but anyone that we can, it's not always accurate. There are some people who are accurate, and you can go and look up, and you can find their usage. People aren't being told as, as much as people are saying that they have leaks. Some people, I think, are calling, and I've asked the team what they're saying to people, and in order to not engage in an argument, though, you know, say, well, this was your usage, this is what you used, and they, there's no way, there's no way I use that amount. And they say, well, is it possible that you have a leak? But those hours, those are common hours to water your lawn. Some people do it at that time, you know, there's others that do it later, but they're not all from 2:00 to 6:00.
No, I agree with you. Sorry, maybe I didn't ask my question very well, because I, you're right. I mean, people don't always tell the full story on social media, but, but I just wanted you to respond to, people are being told that it's that time period that's higher than normal. Is that just because we're not having rain, so people with rain sensors on their sprinklers, their sprinklers are going more often? What are, what are we attributing that timeframe being higher than usual to?
As far as I know, I don't think people are being told it's higher than usual. That's just their high-usage time.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Check your flapper on your toilet, and if you don't know what a flapper is, Google it, because you can go for months. Any other questions? We need to get on to our regular agenda, so. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate the input from the public, and we will get through this. Thank you very much, everybody. That brings us then to our consent agenda separations. Oh, I apologize. Thank you, yeah. So we have an opportunity for public comment on Item 1. That's our consent agenda. Again, if you don't know what that is, it's back on the, a copy of the agenda, shows all those sub-items. So if you'd like to be heard, everything else, there'll be a public hearing on later. So if you'd like to comment on anything on Item 1, the consent agenda and sub-items, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Dan Brooks with the Billings Chamber at 815 South 27th Street, also a veteran six-man football player hailing from the monstrous metropolis of Willow Creek, Montana. So thanks for the six-man shout-out. You're right, if you haven't gone and seen one of those games, they are awful exciting. It's backyard football, but for high schoolers, so.
And I'm sure you were worth at least two, so it was probably just four others and you.
And, and a girl on our team my last year, so we, we had to have six. So anyway, I, I did want to speak to Consent Agenda Item M before you move it off the Consent Agenda and move it to the end of your regular agenda, and just voice our support for those legislative priorities that have been worked through and listed, thanks to the work of the Legislative and Local Affairs Committee, especially the public safety items that are on there. We, the Billings Chamber had hosted a public safety roundtable slash forum with our local legislators, candidates for office, our justice system partners, members of council, thank you, Mayor, Councilman Aspenleiter, City Administrator Kukowski for joining in for that conversation, really with the intent of getting our legislative delegation on the same page as they were last session, and, and I want to give them credit for that, on public safety as the number-one item for billings. So seeing those items on your agenda, those marry up with the number of ours as well, and I think our legislative delegation is going to go in with the priority of public safety. Hopefully, we'll move the ball on a number of those items and get some good things done for billing. So thank you for that. Lastly, it's a little bit off-topic, but I do want to just briefly mention, you got a email today from the Billings Association Realtors on moving forward on the cost of services study. I just want to say, as we, getting ready, practice for the legislative session, me, too, and, you know, however we can help with that, we'll, we'll be ready to partner and help move that forward. So thank you for your time, and would appreciate a due pass on your legislative priorities. Thanks.
Good. Thank you. Any other public comment on Item 1? I should have said, we just asked that you tell us your name and address, and keep a comment, it's the three minutes.
Hello, Council, Mayor. My name is Rebecca Knoll. I live at 1109 Lewis Avenue. I'm the chairperson for the Community Development Board for the City of Billings currently, and I would like to take this opportunity to speak in support of Item Number 1F and the Home ARP supportive services allocations for our partners in our community. It's been a huge lift for our department to get this money thoughtfully allocated so that it can help our neighbors, and it's really exciting that it's going to happen. So I really want to thank you all for your work, and just thank you for your continued support of the Community Development Department, and thanks for the opportunity. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Any other comments on Item 1 or any of the subparts? Any other comment before we close the public comment period on Item 1? No one is coming forward, so we'll close the public comment period. Council, are there separations? Councilmember Kennedy, Councilmember Neese? And Councilwoman Aspenleiter?
Mayor, I would, I would ask that we remove Item E. We separate Item F. We separate Item G, and we remove Item M and put it as number Item 6 on the regular agenda.
If we can go through this a little more, a little slower, so separation, Item 1E, we've usually just done them one at a time, but...
I'll make a second on that.
There's a problem with that. So MOU, that's, that's, that gets moved.
Memorandum of Understanding that we remove.
A later date.
Yes.
Second is just separated?
Separate F.
F. Also, G.
Separate G.
And move 1M to the end of the...
Yeah, Item Number 6 on the regular agenda.
I guess we can do, can we do all that in, in one? I'm not sure how we all have a vote. Maybe we need to take those one at a time. Gina?
The action to remove an item from the agenda takes 3/4 of the members present?
Yeah, that's different from the separation. So we'll just deal with the separations first, and then we'll come back on the motion on to actually move them on the agenda.
I would move that we separate F and G. For discussion.
Let's just, okay, you don't, you don't have to move it. You just have that right to do that unilaterally. So F and G will be separated. Okay, and I, we'll...
Do you want me to remove?
Let's see if there's any other separations, and then we'll come back to changing of the agenda. Councilmember Neese?
I'm sorry, Mayor. I was, I was just wondering why, we normally change agenda first, and then we work on it, so that's why I think it'd be appropriate to separate, remove the items from the agenda that we're actually going to address, and then separate the items out. And so I, I think Councilmember Kennedy's initial conversation about moving, removing Item E, I would second that if that's a motion, so we can vote on that, and then just address the items that are left on the agenda.
Yeah, I, I think your point's well-taken, because if they're, if they're moved, there's no need to separate them. So with the, if there's no objection from the council, let's, let's follow that usual pattern and see if there are any changes to the amendment or to the agenda itself. And with that, I'm going to, if, I'm going to assume there isn't any objection. So I'm going to go back to Councilmember Kennedy. You wanted to address Item 1F. Let's deal with those, or I'm sorry, 1E. Let's deal with them separately. So Councilmember Kennedy, 1E, MOU, Par 3, et cetera, et cetera.
I would move to remove Item E to a later date.
Second.
And second by Councilmember Neese. Any discussion? Okay, oh, Council, or Councilmember Gillick?
Yeah, I'm just interested in finding out the, the reason why I want to move it to another date, just so I understand.
I'll let them, but I assume, Councilmember Neese sent a detailed email with some questions. Was it last night?
It was.
I think, and I imagine that's the purpose, but feel free to comment, Councilmember Kennedy.
I was just moving it because Chris said we should remove it to a later date.
Yeah, so after Chris looked at the email, then looked at the documentation, he agreed that they needed to be reworked some, and it will be brought back to us another date.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion? All right, the motion is to remove Item 1E from the agenda for tonight. If in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll, if opposed, say nay. Motion passed unanimously, including Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Kennedy, you had a, a second agenda item.
I would, I would make a motion to remove Item M and add it to the regular agenda as Item Number 6.
Second.
Second, was that you, Councilmember Neese?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Councilmember Joy?
Just a clarification. Is it removing or just moving? I wasn't sure of the motion. Thank you.
I think it's just moving to the end of our regular agenda.
You're removing it from the consent agenda and adding it to the regular agenda.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Shaw, go ahead.
Thank you. Just to let everybody know, I probably am not going to make it that long in the meeting, so I would turn it over to Councilmember Boyet to run that discussion as our Legislative and Local Affairs representative, if I have to bow out. and local affairs representative, if I have to bow out before we get to it.
Okay, thank you for that heads-up. Hopefully, that won't be the case, but feel... We understand. Very good. Any other discussion? Councilmember Ripses?
I guess I just ask why. I don't think there's anything in there that is controversial. I'm just curious, from those that want to move to regular agenda, why we need to take time on this.
I just think with the resolution, I think we need to have time for discussion on the regular agenda.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, well, you know the motion, it's to move Item 1M to the end of our regular agenda. If in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, nay.
Nay.
Voting in opposition, Councilmembers Shaw and Ripses. All other councilmembers in favor, motion passes. Regular separations now. Do we have separations? Councilmember Aspilider?
Thank you, Mayor. I need to separate Item 1I and 1K for purposes of recusal.
Thank you very much. Any other separations? Let's do that... Have that discussion again. So, Councilmember Kennedy, did you still want to separate Item 1F and 1G?
Yes, I wanted to separate Item 1F and Item 1G for discussion.
Very good, thank you. Any other separations? Before we proceed to a vote on the non-separated items. Don't see any others, so we will move ahead. Councilmember Neese?
I'm assuming you're going to ask questions for the non-separated items, no?
Once there's a motion on the table for the non-separated items, yeah. Fair motion for the non-separated...
I'll make the motion. I move to approve the items the consent agenda submitted, with the exception of the items moved for separation, which is IKF and G.
And is there a second? Councilmember Geelick, second. Any discussion now on the non-separated items? Councilmember Neese?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask regarding Amendment Number 3, and just making sure I understand... Read this correctly. As I understand, the back-end angle parking is to be removed and to be changed to pull-in angle parking now? Did I read that correctly, or am I not reading that correctly?
Councilmember Neese, Mayor and Council, you read that incorrectly.
Okay.
That determination has not been made. We will come back after the analysis is done and talk about it in a work session with you guys, whether we will go back to front, pull-in, or back-in. But what I heard you say is that the decision has been made in this agreement to make that change, and that is not accurate.
That's not in this agreement. This is just... It does talk about that in there, but...
The analysis and the work will be done, and it'll be brought to you guys.
Okay, so that's part of the scope of the agreement.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion on the non-separated items? Okay, the motion is for approval of those items. If in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously, including Councilmember Shaw. Then, for separated item would be Item 1F, Home ARP Supportive Service Project. We'll let people roll out. Councilmember Kennedy, that was your separation. Would you like to hear from staff, or did you want to have anything else to kick us off?
I would like to hear from Brenda, please.
Brenda, we had a little discussion...
It's also bring Carly, because she knows what she's doing, and yeah.
Brenda, we had a little discussion before the board meeting, and you said this has all been hashed out and everything, but you did tell me that Homefront Partners have pulled out?
Yes, they have. They sent us an email earlier today saying that they are not going to sign an agreement with the city for this funding.
Okay. And so can we go ahead and take them out, leave everybody else in, and approve it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for staff? Councilmember Owen and Councilmember Ripses?
Yeah, I don't care who answers, but I did want to ask about the projects a little. So I think we've heard pretty consistently from our various kind of housing and homelessness partners in the community that they're making this collective pivot into supportive services rather than things like a low-barrier shelter and some of those things, which seems perfectly reasonable, except that we're funding people at relatively low levels to all do the same thing. And I'm curious as to the strategy behind that, because to me, that seems really suboptimal.
Yeah, so I think our board's intention was to start off with that smaller amount, just because we had, you know, six great qualified applicants in the first place, and it was difficult for them to say, oh, this one would provide more services or better services than the other. So I think their, I guess, thought process was they would do those smaller amounts, get the money out as fast as possible, and then we did build the renewable kind of feature into it. So if they do expend that, you know, within two or three-quarters, and they're in compliance and are providing everything that's needed, they can request additional funding until we get up to that.
I get you there. That's right, that wasn't quite my question. They're all doing the same things.
Oh, the same things.
That's my concern, is so if I'm trying to... If I'm in crisis, and I'm trying to navigate, I roll up to HRDC, and they say, you know what? We've got a housing voucher, but we're out of utility co-pays. Go call United Way, or go see if they've got it. And now, A, we're asking people to navigate multiple agencies, and B, each of those agencies is taking a little admin haircut, which ultimately diminishes what's going to people. So what was the thinking behind allowing so much, I mean, almost identical services?
Sure, I think we just... We left it as an open process, so they applied for the services that they are seeing that their clients are needing the most. And that actually matched up with our Home ARP allocation plan and assessment. We did a huge community assessment, and the top needs were the rental assistance, substance abuse treatment, mental health treatment, and case management, and those are all the top services that our partners are wanting to provide as well, so...
Well, I'm just going to express my opinion, and then allow other councilmembers who are seeking recognition, is I hear what you're saying, I really do. I just don't like it. I don't like this direction. You know, today, there was a ribbon-cutting in the community where YBGR and YDI actually came together and said, you know, what were better if we worked together? And the same would be true in our housing and homelessness services. This isn't a system. This is a lot of agencies who are all, you know, I mean, they're going to be juggling. I'm curious as to how we're going to coordinate all this through HIMSS, so that we don't have people double-dipping and shopping. I'm a little concerned about that. I just don't think this is an optimal way to do it. I get that we're taking a first step here, but I hope as we go forward for multiple years, we can do better in the future, and encourage these guys to come together and come up with a strategy, instead of everybody gets their own piece of the pie. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Ripses, I've got a question, and Councilmember Neese has sent up.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor, I was just trying to get in earlier, but I have to recuse myself from this discussion. I'm going to vote on alternatives as applied.
Okay, thank you very much. My question, Carly, is we have had members in the community who have reminded us frequently about lack of capacity in... Or what they perceive to be a lack of capacity in short-term... Low-barrier shelter, emergency sheltering, et cetera, et cetera. We didn't get an application from any organization for that, so we can't go up and just start handing out to anybody who wants to set up a low-barrier shelter. But in theory, these dollars in future years, or if there was leftover from Homefront's lack of participation this year, something like that would be eligible to apply for these dollars, I assume, but can you just speak to that?
So it is just a one-time allocation or award from HUD, and we've already done the full assessment and allocation plan that identifies those priorities and supportive services the priorities, and we haven't included anything as far as low-barrier shelter. So when you did approve the allocation plan, there was some public comment on housing being a need, but ultimately, it was voted on that supportive services would be... What would be funded. So we wouldn't be able to say, oh, that $100,000 that one agency is not going to spend, we can now open that up for housing, or the preservation of housing or building housing. So it all has to be supportive services. That would take a pretty big amendment to our allocation plan.
Okay, so it has to fit within that plan? Okay, very good. Councilmember Neese, Councilmember Boyett?
Thank you, Mayor. So with the Homefront leaving, I guess I'm a little unclear, does that mean there's that much more money for the remaining partners? Or is there wasn't a certain allocation for each one, so now we're not going to do the full $100,000?
Right, so $100,000 per organization, so that $100,000 would then be available in the future.
So it'll be $100,000 per... Okay. So I, you know, as I read through this, by the way, thank you for the summary of the things, I think I asked for that, and other than 800 pages, looking through and trying to figure out what each organization was doing, but as I read through this, I agreed with Councilmember Owen, that there is just a lot of duplication of services. So how do you determine that a tenant is not getting a security deposit from one organization, running over to another organization, saying, I need a certain deposit here, or I need, you know, first rent's here, last rent... How is this coordination going on to prevent that from happening, where we're just giving all this money away like that to different, same individuals?
Sure, yeah, and that's a huge stipulation for HUD as well. It's built into their guidelines and requirements that agencies have to check for that, as well as the clients or households that are being served have to certify that they are not doing that. So as far as that goes, it is up to the subrecipient to kind of do their due diligence and check that as best as possible for the client, and the client to state that, no, I'm not receiving services elsewhere.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm asking, how are you guys? How are you making sure? What is the process? For instance, I know there's, I think in the continuing-of-care, people will check in, and they... To make sure they don't get duplicative services around, is that what's happening? Is everyone who's applying for assistance has to register in the system so that they know they're not getting duplication or benefit?
No, we didn't make that a stipulation of it, that they had to register in the system, just because there are several agencies that use different systems. So it is... It's on the subrecipient to check that. I guess through my monitoring process, if I'm seeing that there's, you know, a lot of duplication in client IDs, or I don't know, I would find that out, but it's on the subrecipients to do their due diligence and figure out if there's duplication.
Okay, yeah, I think there needs to be better accountability for these funds that are going out, and I agree, I think when we're just splitting up money amongst many organizations like this, we're not serving our community well, and I think we need to do something different than what is being presented here. But thank you.
Very much. Councilmember Boyett?
Thank you, Mayor. So there were six people, now there's five people getting the money. We have $100,000, so will each person get... Each company get $20,000 more then?
No, not necessarily. So we're... It's the initial allocation of $100,000 on a reimbursement basis. So if, you know, say one agency expends that $100,000 in eight months, then they could say, we still see a need, we need another $50,000 to serve the rest of our clients this year, or whatever that looks like. So not divvying it up like that, but more so $100,000 initially, and then whatever is left in the pot can be asked for later.
Okay. Can you tell us why Homefront didn't want the $100,000?
They provided a few reasons, just as far as legal agreements, they're not... They are saying that there's a lot in there, and they are... There is... There's a lot in there. It's... And they're coming directly from HUD, so it's nothing that I could really avoid. And I think that's kind of the major concern there for them.
So the paperwork is too much trouble for $100,000, you're saying?
Sure, maybe.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Joy, and then I'll just remind council, we need a motion on this item.
Yes, I was going to make a motion, but I didn't want to cut off questions or discussion, but I move to approve Home ARP Supportive Service Project subrecipient allocations with the removal of Homefront Partners from that motion. Thank you.
And second by Councilmember Kennedy. Very good. Now, discussion on the motion. Just a reminder, per Chris's comments at the beginning of this meeting, this, even though it's not explicit, this would authorize the mayor to sign the contracts, to effectuate this. Councilmember Neese?
Thank you, Mayor. If I thought there was a word, I'd make a substitute motion to deny this, but I think that... So I won't support this motion. I think that this... When we're giving away these tax dollars like this, we need to have better accountability to our constituents to making sure that we're... That money is being distributed well, and without any kind of potential fraud and things like that. So I'm not going to support this. I hope that next year, it probably will pass, but I hope that next year, that you put some better guidelines in there to where people can maybe have to register the current system that's in there. I don't know if that's a possibility, but some way to... In order to make sure that these funds are being well-used, accountable, and then you're not having to spend a whole lot of time having to look through whether or not you do have duplications of stuff, because it's already built into a system that's there. So I won't support this. I'm assuming it's probably going to pass, but I sure won't support this at this time the way it's presented, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Joy?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council. I do support this allocation. I think the suggestion that there are way more... There are more efficient ways for our nonprofits to serve their clients, I absolutely agree. I would love to see that... How that would work. I'm thinking back to many long discussions with many nonprofits in this room, where, you know, those discussions just go on and on. And in my years on council, I haven't seen a lot of that, but it is very good. But I do want to push back on the assumption that there's fraud. That's not... There's an evidence of that, there isn't any implication of that. The subrecipients are responsible for administering the funds, so I don't want to in any way imply that there's something not kosher about what happens. Thank you.
Very good. Any further discussion on the motion? Motion is for approval, with the exception of the Homefront application. Any further discussion? Don't see any, so we'll proceed to a vote. Again, the motion is for approval. If in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Voting in opposition, Councilmembers Owen and Councilmember Neese. This motion passes 10 to 2. Thank you very much. That concludes Item 1F. Item 1G, settlement agreement with Christopher Tucker involving Yellowstone Avenue... 802 Yellowstone Avenue. Councilmember Kennedy, that was also your separation.
It wasn't.
Oh, I apologize.
You wanted to just clarify, that vote was 8 to 2 when I was recused.
Oh, oh, I wasn't even close, the math, yes. It's not even that late. It's just going to go downhill. Yeah, 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 but there's not 12 of us, there's 11 of us, and we didn't even have you. Okay, thanks for clarifying that. Appreciate it. With that, then we will move to Item 1G. Councilmember Kennedy, that's your separation. Did you want to kick us off?
Yes, I would like to. I would... I would like Tina to come up. This has been something that has gone on for many, many years, and as I went door-to-door and everything, I heard it from the neighborhoods, and something needed to be done at 802 Yellowstone Avenue. It's going to happen, and I just wanted to call up Tina and say, thank you for pushing this forward. I've asked for it, you probably got tired of my phone calls and everything, and now we're going to have an opportunity for the neighborhood to have some input on that property, and that building will come down. A lot of them have asked for it. I just wanted to thank you publicly on that.
Well, I appreciate that. Most of that credit should go to my staff and to the legal assistance that we've received from the city attorney's office. It was a team effort, and we couldn't have done it without them.
Thank you. And I just wanted to bring it up, just so we could do that recognition.
Thank you. Councilmember Kennedy, did you have a motion on this item?
Yes, I would move that we approve the settlement agreement with Christopher Tucker on 802 Yellowstone Avenue.
And second by Councilmember Joy. Any further discussion? Before we proceed to a vote. Okay, Item 1G, the motion is for approval. If in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. If opposed, nay. That motion passes unanimously, 11 to 0. Councilmember Joy, item 1A is the next one up.
Yes, thank you. I move we approve preliminary minor plat of Zimmerman Home Place subdivision, 5th filing with Councilmember Aspen Lighter recusing himself. And item K, final major plat of Wild Rose subdivision, 1st filing with Councilmember Aspen Lighter recusing himself.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Joy, second, Councilmember Neese, on both items 1A and item 1K. Any discussion?
Mayor, I thought we had to do them separately.
When we were, no, no, these are, it's kind of the separation part, when we were moving things, so these are just the separation stuff. So, just like we do the consent agenda altogether. So if in favor of the motion for approval, both those items, please say aye. Aye. If opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. That can, unanimously with Councilmember Aspen Lighter not voting, so 10-0. Very good. That concludes our consent agenda, and brings us to item 2 on our regular agenda. Councilmember Kennedy?
Mayor, I would just ask for a courtesy that we could move the public hearing and first reading ordinance for zone change 1055 to the first agenda item before item 2 on the regular agenda, because there are people that are here to speak on it.
Can we just ask for a show of hands? If you did come to give comment on, or to observe on item 5, zone change 1055, just raise your hand. Okay, very good, thank you. So council, we have a motion to change the agenda, and a second by Councilmember Aspen Lighter. That would become the next item up, correct, you said? So, any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Aspen Lighter?
Chris, if we can, as we do these going forward, because we are wildly inefficient, if we could put the public stuff, like these land use issues, first, before we waste the rest of the night on the rest of our agenda, I think that would be good for the public so they don't have to sit through all the rest of this stuff going forward.
Feel free to comment, Chris, but then we'll get back to this item.
I'll be brief. Here, here the council member, I will also say, I do hear from time to time, though, put the most important business up first, which is how we pick this relative to the budget. So, no, whatever order you guys would like it, we do try to think about both attendance and being fresh for making decisions. So we will take all that into consideration as we develop your agenda. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would only say, the applicants have consultants sitting in the room that are racking up a bill as we sit here for five hours. And having been one of them before, and unnecessarily billing for sitting here, I think it, it's a courtesy to those folks to get them in and out, and we can get on with our business when they're out.
Very good. Further discussion on the motion? Councilmember Neese?
Mayor, just for a couple of questions. One is, make sure that developers are here to talk about this, because sometimes they wait until the agenda is, so they are here. Okay, and then just for, because I can't see the audience, about 10 of the 15 people public actually raised their hands, so two-thirds of the people raised their hands, we're here. So, just to, so your information, since you can't see the public. Thank you.
Very good. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, we'll proceed to a vote, get the vote, is just to move the order, item number 5 would swap with item, well, it would be the next item up, that we maintain the rest of the order. If in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. If opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. So, we will move item 5 to our next item. Denise, would you please read item number 5?
Public hearing and first reading ordinance for zone change 1055 to remove multiple lots in the Galaxy subdivision. Zoning commission recommends approval and adoption of the 10 review criteria.
Very good. Nicole, and you're here, so.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. This doesn't sound like it's on, but I'll yell. This is a zone change in a planned development that was one of the early planned developments approved by the city council in 1978. A planned development zone is different than other standard zoning in that it customizes the land uses, setbacks, building heights, all of that within one document. It is really more of a contract between the developer and the city on how a subdivision would develop. This subdivision, Galaxy subdivision, has current underlying zoning of single-family and multifamily, and then there are some park pieces. There's really nothing super special about that. It is based on our previous zoning, which was retired in 2021, so those zone districts that it's based on no longer are used within the city. The proposed zoning would take it out of this planned development zone. The covenants and restrictions would stay in place, but it would adopt the standard zoning districts that we have now of N3 neighborhood, first, you know, single-family zoning, mid-century neighborhood, N2, and mixed residential zoning, NX2. So, that is the proposal before you. It doesn't take any other lots out of that planned development zone, just the lots owned by Mr. Lines. So, single-family areas modeled on R9600, there's minimum lot areas, which are not 9600 square feet in this planned development, but very similar to that previous zoning. The multifamily area is modeled on the retired residential multifamily zone, but it was very specific in this document about what type of structure would go on each lot. So some lots are designated for a six-plex, some are designated for 10-plexes, and some designated for 12-plexes. So that part of the planned development is very structured and strict. In other words, if somebody bought one of these multifamily area lots, and they wanted to put up a single-family home, the planned development literally doesn't allow it. So, that is a restriction that's very hard to deal with. The building height in this district is 25 feet for the single-family and 30 feet for a multifamily. In today's modern building codes and footprints, it would be very hard to get that type of building in compliance with those building heights. It also has a 30% lot coverage maximum, so you can't just spread out the building, you have to go up, and if you can't go up, then you can't really build on those lots. It does have minimum setbacks, and it does have building size and dwelling unit specifics per lot. The proposed zoning, the N3 and the N2, is a one or two-family dwelling. It has standard height limitations. In the N3, it is a 34-foot height limit. In the N2, it is a lower height limit of 27 feet. The NX2, a 2 to 8-unit building, has a possibility of going to three stories, but I haven't seen that occur in Billings where they've applied the NX2 zoning. Most of the time, it's one or two stories for building height. This new zoning proposed has build-two ranges for the N2 and the NX2, not minimum setbacks. That will help with some of the lots in this subdivision, where there are geographic features like rim faces, that the setbacks, the minimum setbacks, push those buildings almost to the edge of rims, which is not good engineering or planning. Lot coverage is raised to 40% for the N3 and N2, and then 60% for an NX2. So you could literally do a side-by-side building instead of a stacked unit building. Building height, as I said, is 34 for N3, 27 for N2, NX2 is 2 and 1/2, or 3, depending on what type of building you're building. Here is the subject property. It is situated between Governor's Boulevard, Arrington Avenue, and Senators Boulevard. Judicial Avenue runs along the southeast side of the property. There is park that's designated along Senators, Judicial, and the power line that goes across the northeast side of the subdivision. It is actually land owned by the city of Billings, dedicated with this subdivision in 1978, because Northwestern Energy has a power line easement. Nothing can be built there. There can't be ballfields, playgrounds, none of that. It really is a, basically a trail easement between Arrington and Senators. Here is the current zoning of the existing parcels as they're subdivided. As you can see in the middle there, that red hash, diagonal hash, is a park. The original Hulcrum Park, dedicated with this subdivision, was declared excess in 2002 by the city of Billings. Mr. Lines bought this property, and the deed was recorded in his name two decades ago. He never took the next step and rezoned that property, so it's currently considered still park. So part of this zoning would address that issue of the park. So the PDR96 is basically along that linear park on the northeast side, and along parts of Zodiac and Asteroid Avenue. The PDRMF are these parcels shown in green. Here is the proposed zoning. It's a little hard to differentiate the colors here. So N3 will replace the PD, single-family. The N2 will partially cover part of that former park. The NX2 will replace the existing PDRMF, and will keep the N3, single-family, along the south part. You'll notice there is a difference in the street alignment. The idea is that Mr. Lines will replat this property, eliminating those multiple cul-de-sacs along Aries Avenue, to make a straight street, or partially straight street, that will connect to Asteroid, the same with Zodiac, and then Asteroid will have the second connection out of this neighborhood to Arrington Avenue. Right now, all of these homes and households have to enter and exit this subdivision through one street. There is another portion of the planned development Galaxy, which is on the north side of Senators Boulevard, that will not be affected at all, so it's not on the map Here is the subject property. As you can see, most of it is vacant, it is all platted. There are tax identification numbers for each one of these parcels, most of them owned by Mr. Lines. There is a, I guess a dirt track that lines up with Asteroid Avenue, so people do use this property for walking, for recreating, just enjoying the open space owned by private individuals. But it is zoned for development. One of the primary reasons this property didn't develop all at once, as planned in 1978, was that they planned to sell bonds for an SID to do all of the improvements at once, and the bond sale failed. This was at the time when providing improvements through SIDs was really not considered legal through state law. So there were several other subdivisions in the Heights that also had bond failures or SID failures after the subdivisions were approved. There was a downturn in the economy, lots of subdivision lots in the Heights went up for tax sale, and these were bought up by many individuals. The zoning commission did conduct a public hearing on September 3rd. They took public testimony and received the staff recommendation, and they are forwarding a recommendation to you of approval of this proposed zone change. They believe it meets the 2016 growth policy, especially the infill policy. This property has been vacant for a long time. When parcels are left vacant with no attention paid to them, they tend to, people tend to assume things about the property that aren't true, like it's open space, it's a public park, or that it could be used for anything that anyone wants to. They are compatible with the existing zoning, the underlying zoning there. It really is not a significant change in proposed uses from the planned development to the standard zoning districts. And it's more predictable, but gives flexibility particularly to those multifamily lots, so that they can choose between two or eight-unit buildings anywhere in that spectrum, without trying to shoehorn in 10 or 12 or 24-unit buildings on lots. Completion of the subdivision should help in water pressure, although that's more complex than, because there are two pressure zones here that are involved, so it may solve the issue for some existing residents, but not all. And it will increase public safety by creating that second full access into the neighborhood. This is the dead end of Asteroid Avenue, so you're facing south here. And if you're looking northeast, across the subject property from that dead end, and then looking southwest, so you can kind of see the lots, you can't see the back of them, but you can see the cliffs behind them. So those lots are not very deep at all. And then looking back north onto the developed part of Asteroid Avenue. And then if we switch over to Aries Avenue, the parallel dead-end street, here's the subject property, looking northeast from the dead end of Aries, and then northwest up the developed portion of Aries Avenue. Here are the zone change criteria that the zoning commission has reported to you in your staff memo. Again, here is the existing zoning, underlying those parcels, and the proposed zoning, and I'd be happy to take any of your questions.
Very good, thank you, Nicole. Council will open up for public, or for questions, factual questions for Nicole, and then we'll turn it over. I believe the owner's representative is with us also, so we'll ask him if he's got any other comments, or if he wants to respond to any of the questions that we might have for Nicole at this point. And then we'll open up for public comment, and once the public comment period is over, we'll turn it back to council to discuss the merits. So with that, are there factual questions for Nicole? Councilmember Neese?
Thank you, Mayor. Nicole, you mentioned that the covenants would, of the PMD would stay with the land, as I understand correctly, but you also mentioned that a lot of these lots had, I couldn't tell if they were covenants of the PMD, or, I mean, is there something separate in the, because I don't know if we saw the original PMD, but are there, are there things in there in the PMD that is actually going to stay, like you can't have, I don't know, chickens, even though we have a chicken or an islet out? I mean, there are things like that in there that are staying? Because I'm not sure, because you said that some of the lots said, "Well, you can build a 10-unit house, or 10-unit structure, or 12-unit, and now we can't, because it's going to be an N2," or something like that. So, or some were limited to four units, and now they're going to be able to build a six-plex. So what is, what is actually staying in these PMD covenants that are, and what is not staying? That's what I'm not sure about.
Well, the covenants are not a document that I shared with you, because I don't have those covenants. The applicant's agent can speak about the covenants. The document that's in your staff report is the planned development document, the contract between the city and the developer. They would not be subject to those restrictions that are in that document. But everything else, like you can't have chickens, or you can't have, you know, junk vehicles, or you can't bring in a house from somewhere else, those are typical covenants, and I'm sure that those are, those are probably in the existing CCRs for the subdivision.
Okay. I think it helps, because I know, I guess I'm used to seeing my covenants, my covenants say you can only build, you know, so much square feet, and so many, you know, stuff like that. And so what you're saying is those covenants, really as far as the structure, what you could build is probably was in the PMD, anything else is not. And so whatever is left in the covenants are there, and if there is building requirements in the covenants, those will still be there regardless.
Yes. So whatever is the most strict... So whatever is the most strict is what the builder would have to follow.
Okay. And then, Mayor, one more question.
Okay.
And I don't know if you can answer this, Nicole, or maybe the developer can, but I noticed several lots that are vacant or not part of this change. And it would seem to me that if we're making the change for developing this whole area, that, that it would be probably better to have everyone included. Is there a reason why a lot of these lots that are still undeveloped still are going to chose to remain in the PMD?
I believe Mr. Lyons and their agent approached those undeveloped lot owners. None were wanting to join this application. I've learned since that time that Mr. Lyons has actually purchased some of those lots, particularly the ones that are currently zoned RMF. So you may see a subsequent zone change.
Okay, so we may, all right, so we may, someone else could, any of these people could then come back and then do the zone change to add into this entire development to kind of make it more unified. Great, thank you.
Very good. Any other questions for Nicole? Don't see any, don't go far away, but if the owner's representative would like to come forward, just give you the floor. You've, you've heard the comments, so.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nicole did a good job of summarizing it. I think the one thing that I'd add to it that has come up through several meetings is the why as to, you know, this, what we're going to for the zoning versus what was there for the P D is very similar. And it, it did originally start with the park. That portion had to go through the rezone process. When we started notifying a quarter mile out, we're already notifying the majority of those owners. And there is a, a good advantage to rezoning the multifamily portion to the city zoning code to allow those buildings to move closer to the road, makes the lots a lot more developable. And then lastly, the owner's intent to replat the lots, it, it was for the benefit of going into that subdivision to not be trying to have planning department make a interpolation as to the lots that are underneath of there in the original P D, and we do a new aligned road, how many lots can we have or not have, since it'd be part of an original, referring back to Galaxy subdivision, so. And with that, I can answer questions or provide clarifications of anything you may have.
Great. And Greg, did you introduce yourself?
Sorry, Greg Reed with W W C Engineering.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Rowan?
Thank you, Greg. And I might have missed this somewhere, so I apologize if I'm asking for repetition, but as you all are looking at reconfiguring some of those roads and providing them through connectivity, what types of, if any, traffic calming measures are you considering? Because obviously we want connectivity, but when you have connectivity, there's, there's the potential for speeds to go up. So what have you thought about in terms of traffic calming?
So as you'll, you'll hear, the neighbors have some concerns regarding speed of traffic. It isn't necessarily inside of this development area, as this would be coming off of the main roads, it's primarily Aronson. And those neighbors have, have reached out to city engineering, talked to the traffic engineer there, and we have a proposal in place to move to the next phase of this, which would be subdivision plating. Subdivision plating has a traffic study as part of it. The city traffic engineer does have us evaluating traffic calming measures specifically on Aronson, inside of that study. We don't have a preconceived notion yet, but it is included in the traffic study scope.
Okay, I was just wondering if you had any thoughts yet, but, okay, thanks.
Very good, thank you. Other questions? Councilmember Boyet?
Thank you, Mayor. I was on the zoning commission for 10 years, and I never saw this many people show up to a, to a meeting before. The yellow pages, it shows two pages of people showing up. That's incredible. Can you just give us the synopsis of what happened at that public meeting?
So the, the pre-application neighborhood meeting, we scheduled it out in advance in the summer, in the evening, and we got unlucky on the day. It was a 100 degree day. There was a fair number of people that were, that were frustrated that we had that outside, but we did, we worked through, we answered questions to the individuals that were there, and there was a lot of concerns. Most of the concerns were that there was a previous zone change that was attempted here, and there was something regarding Section 8 housing or low income housing. So we were trying to dispel those notions. We have no idea what that was. There was concerns over increased density that were being proposed.
If we could just ask you to maybe take your conversation out a little bit, or, thank you. Go ahead.
So there was some, some concerns on increased density at that initial meeting, and we did talk through that several times on how our proposed zoning versus the existing zoning were relatively similar acres of multifamily, multifamily and number of single family houses proposed. And as we, as we walked through it more and more, there was some clarity that was brought to all those individuals, which it, it has been a building on meetings. So we had the pre-application neighborhood meeting, and then there was a Heights Task Force meeting, which was not an actual formal meeting held, but there was one that I showed up at, at the Oasis and met with 20 to 25 of the members and talked through the questions again. And then those members were able to reach out to city engineering and, and get their voices heard, so.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Joy?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I know this is very early in the process, but what you envision is market rate housing. Is that true?
So this, this specific developer, he's not a builder, he's just a developer and then sells lots, and he tends to like to go to single family housing. So his first filing, first phase of what he's going to be looking to do would be that, that eastern road connecting, I believe, Aries Avenue. He'd connect that from Aronson through up to Aries and have a short stub road for future, and then just move through the next two roads on future phases. He's, he's looking at doing the close to 9,600 square foot lots is what he typically likes to go for, and then whatever market rate is.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions for Greg? Greg, the staff report says, and I assume this is accurate, that the existing planned development would theoretically allow 373 dwellings under the new zoning. That drops to 235. Just confirming the accuracy of that. I imagine those are highest case scenario in both cases. It would have been very, very difficult to get that many units, probably under either scenario, but go ahead.
The P D zoning has really high densities on those multifamily lots, like eight plexes on a 16,000 square foot lot with 55% lot coverage and a, and fairly sizable setbacks, which at that time you wouldn't have had to deal with the 50 year stormwater pond that you would now. So you'd, you'd be looking at a very small footprint with not very many floors to somehow fit eight units into it. And the existing P D is very likely not possible to construct to that number of units. But that is the totaled up unit count in the P D in these lots.
Okay, very good. I don't see any other questions. So thank you very much. We'll over for, for public comment. So this is a public hearing. If anybody would like to be heard, please come forward. Just ask to keep your comments to three minutes. Tell us your name and address. So please come forward, and if you can, make, if there's more than a couple, go ahead, make a little line back there, then we know who else wants to speak. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Linda Holmes, and I am at 657 Oasis Drive. So this neighborhood is affecting us. First, I want to say thank you for your consideration to us tonight.
Speak into the microphone.
I didn't know if it was working, sorry. Thank you for your consideration for us tonight. That was very nice. Secondly, I'd like to say that we are very happy for the zone change. As you can see, it's much better than it was. Our concerns are still the traffic. Sounds like we're going to get a, a traffic study. The water pressure is really, really bad up there. We're barely able to water our lawns. And with adding 269 families or buildings or whatever it is, the population up there is going to be incredibly affecting us. So we're concerned about public safety. The crime rate in the Heights, there's a lot of crime in our area. Over by the Castle Rock Park, we're not far from there. A lot of young juvenile crime up there. So with, with those buildings, we're concerned about public safety. I don't know if there can be a public safety study done up there as well, if that's a possibility. The other issue is we're sandstone. The building up there, we're concerned about it affecting our dwellings and causing damage in foundations. There was a big development over by Aries, and I'm not sure how long ago it was, but I know that there was a lot of comments on that. So that's another concern. I'm really glad to hear that the bylaws are going to stay the same. We did ask for that. Sorry, let me look at my notes and make sure I got everything. Our biggest concern for traffic is Aronson. I don't know if any of you live up there, but you're going to add 269 dwellings coming down Aronson at 8 o'clock in the morning or when school gets out. I just, we're going to need some traffic lights, we're going to need some help there. And it's sad kind of to me because the Heights has always kind of been a bottleneck, and we've made many different changes to make that better. And again, we've made changes, and now I feel like we're going to kind of go back. Other than that, the developer has been great to work with. And that's all I have.
Very good, thank you. Other comments? Please come forward, this is a public hearing. Okay? Please, again, make a little line or I will end up closing our public hearing prematurely.
My name's Lou Hannaby, I reside at 656 Oasis Drive. I just wanted to say some of the similar things that my neighbor said, and one is the traffic study is very important for us. I remember when Aronson wasn't in, the extension, we're very glad it did because it, I could get down, downtown in a few minutes. So a lot of people use Aronson. So our big fear is once we have all this new housing and a couple hundred extra people going to work in the morning, that it's hard enough to get on Aronson, that if you have a traffic study and, and if you put on a light, at least we will eventually get on Aronson and be able to go to work. So, and then the other issue would be the water pressure. It's, we have an issue with it. I know folks on Aronson don't because they have a 10 inch main, but I noticed that looping a series of dead end water and sewer services will improve our water situation. So I hope so. And so that's our second concern. Otherwise, we are all for the zoning change. We think it'll improve our, our neighborhood. So, and it's a great neighborhood.
Thank you. Much appreciated. Any other public comment on this item? Any other public comment before I close our public hearing? All right, no one is coming forward or standing up, so we'll close the public hearing. Back to council. Council, do you want to proceed? Councilmember Boyet?
I just have a question for Nicole. Nicole, I've heard for many, many years the water pressure in the Heights, or, or is this something that obviously the city's aware of? I mean, any thoughts, comments?
I didn't have anything directly from city engineering or utility engineering on this issue, but Greg Reed is familiar with it. I think it has to do with more of the geography and what the depth of those and the size of those water lines, the transmission mains in this area. Because this sits up at the top of an area, so people on Aronson or on Judicial are going to have more pressure. But there's also a dividing line between pressure zones here. So water coming into the north part of Galaxy is coming from a different reservoir than the water that services these other areas. So I'm sure as part of the subdivision, they will look at those utility lines that have been installed and see whether those are adequate or they need to be upgraded as part of the subdivision to improve that water pressure.
Councilmember Boyet, are you satisfied with that, or did you want to hear from Greg?
It's just that I've heard this for many years, and not, this isn't the first time. I've heard a lot of people say terrible water. Greg, do you have any response to this then?
Mayor and Council, so the, the water pressure, I guess to very simply explain it, there is an issue created in this because the zone where these lots are and the zone at the bottom of Alkali Creek is the same. So static water, no water being used in any of them. There's houses up near here that are 55 PSI, and the ones at the bottom are 120. So to turn pressure up here, you equally turn it up at both houses, and 120 is also, is already extremely high for a residential house, so.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Neese, Councilmember Gulik?
Yeah, Mayor, I actually had a question for, was it Jim? Greg? Sorry. I should have wrote that down, apologize. The residents mentioned construction in the sandstone, that possible disruption foundations, and I'm just wondering if you could speak to that and how that construction may, may have been maybe years ago, that's what happened, but how, how is, how do you expect or what do you think of as far as construction, what kind of disruption there would be when you're building these, these units out?
So the, the typical way that's dealt with, private contract roadway construction is to require the contractor to do a pre-construction survey of all the slabs, concrete structures, foundations within a certain distance of anywhere trenching or excavation work might occur. And then they'd have to do a post-construction survey to prove that they didn't potentially damage, crack, move any of those structures. So that is very likely what's going to happen here. As part of the subdivision plating phase, we, we are planning on doing drilling, geotech evaluation. We would like to get somebody out there with an excavator and see what this area is going to be like for using newer, larger excavation equipment to trench through it.
Okay, and has that always been the case, or how long has it been the case where you've had to do these surveys before and after to ensure that neighbors are protected? Have they been around for a while?
As long as I've been around.
Okay, thank you.
For that.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Council. I, Greg, just, Councilmember Gulik, Councilmember Raspolite?
I think I'm ready to just have a motion on the table, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So having conducted a public hearing, considered written and spoken public testimony, I move to approve first reading ordinance for zone change 1055 and adopt the findings of the 10 review criteria as recommended by the zoning commission.
Councilmember Raspolite had already indicated the second, whether he wanted to or not.
No, I'm not, sir.
Second. No, you're not, okay, very good. All right, Councilmember Neese does that. Okay, all right, go ahead.
And then, so, I'm glad to hear that, that the, the zone change is, is, works for, for neighbors present here. The, the traffic piece, of course, will be dealt with not at this time, but at the next phase of, of the development with, but first have to address this piece. And, yeah, I think the water pressure, I guess we don't have Debbie Malling here to be able to speak to that, but I think my understanding is if you have a loop type of system, you're, you can improve water pressure, but I, we don't, can't really get details on that, but anyhow.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion on the motion? Councilmember Neese?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, I really appreciate the, the positive comments from the residents and their concerns, but also the developer, because I, I've driven by this, these parcels for years and wondered why is no one developing this? And so I, I understand now, and thank you very much for taking the time to find a way to get this developed. So I think this is going to be a great project for the Heights and look forward to seeing this developed out, so thank you.
Very good. Okay, council, are you ready to vote? No one's raising their hands, so we will move to a vote. The vote is for approval of item five, which we've moved up. If in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
If opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Voting in opposition, Councilmember Raspolite or all other council members voting in favor. So motion passes 10 to 1. That concludes item number five, or whatever we're calling it. We'll go to our next item then on our agenda. Denise, would you please read former item number two?
Continued public hearing and resolution setting annual levies on general fund, transit, library, public safety one, two, and three, and general obligation debt. Staff recommends approval.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is continuing the public hearing from two weeks ago, which I believe is still open. So after my brief presentation, I'd encourage you to hold a public hearing and then consider adoption of one of the resolutions that's before you. There are two. One suggesting the minimum number of mills needed consistent with your budget, as well as another reflecting the maximum number of mills that would be allowed under the charter. The difference is related to what we expected the tax base to grow at 1%, as opposed to what we realized, which actually happened at 1 and 1/2%. This slide shows, or is a repeat of what you'd seen two weeks ago. Minimum, minimum number of mills. Um, minimum, minimum number of mills that you would need to adopt to be consistent with your budget, 207.37. That's about, uh, I believe one mill higher than last year. Uh, and then the max you could adopt, 208.38. Um, the difference between those two to the median home is about $4.21 for the year. That would generate about an additional $276,000 of tax revenue, uh, in the associated funds represented there. You, you could, you could adopt whatever mills you like. Uh, I know that was considered last time. Um, I would recommend you do not, do not adopt less than the minimum because we would have to amend the budget accordingly, um, which you can't do tonight. So regardless of what you do tonight, there will be no budget amendments related to that. Um, but you know, the, there, there's technically infinite number of adoption options here. But I, I'm recommending one of the two for simplicity. Um, I did add this, uh, which you hadn't seen just as, to give some comparison for you and the general public. Um, FY 24, on the far right, the median, uh, home last year paid property taxes to the city of Billings of 859.05. Uh, under the minimum amount, it'd be at 863.36, a difference of $4.31. At the maximum would be 867.57, an increase of 852 per year. Mayor, council, with that, I'll turn it back to you for, uh, discussion and continued public hearing.
Uh, very good. Thank you. We'll turn to Councilmember Raspliner. I just encourage council, we had extensive discussion on this two weeks ago. So we'll try to minimize questions and move to a vote quickly. Councilmember Raspliner? Oh yeah, we do have to have a public hearing. So I, but I, uh, do have questions for Andy before we have a public hearing. Okay, let's open up for public comment. Um, uh, is there, uh, any public comment on item number two? Okay, no one's coming forward. We'll come, we'll close the public hearing. Um, I had recognized Councilmember Raspliner, go ahead.
Having conducted a public hearing, considering written and spoken public testimony, I move to approve resolution setting annual levies to, on general fund, transit, library, public safety, one, two, three, and general obligation debt at the minimum levels presented by staff.
Your second? I heard second for Councilmember Owen. Um, any discussion? Council, okay. Uh, if you don't want to speak to your motion, I'll recognize Councilmember Rupes.
Mayor, I spoke last time.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rupes?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, since the last time we discussed, Chris, I think we have some more information, clarity on the impact of the fire department overtime and, uh, what, what we expect that to do over the next couple of months? What it's currently doing right now and how it may impact our, our budget this year? Or do you have any information to share with us there?
Councilmember, uh, Rupes and Mayor and council, what I would share, I don't have details to share, but I will tell you, the fire department has been asked to present, uh, a plan of how they will live within the budgeted amount for salaries and overtime within this fiscal year. Because yes, the first 60 days of this fiscal year look very much like the last 90 days of the prior fiscal year. And if, as you recall, in the last 90 days, because of staff shortages and, uh, the, uh, desire to continue to provide the same level of services, um, whereas at the end of the third quarter, we were only 1% over in expenditures in the fire department. We ended the fiscal year, as you recall, two weeks ago, just shy of a million. I think it was 964,000 over. Um, this first quarter, which isn't over yet, uh, we, we're on that same path. So, uh, I cannot here tonight tell you specifically what we will bring forward in budget amendments to try to get that cost back under control. Or, uh, I can assure you that the finance director and I don't have any tricks up our sleeve to utilize more reserves because of how close we are there. Um, it, it will be a very challenging, uh, situation for us in fire to come where what was done on budget adoption night, and I hope I've got this correct, we made some amendments, right? We moved money out of the overtime budget and over to payroll. Frankly, I, it's six and one half a dozen the other. They both are paying firefighters to cover shifts. Is going to be extremely difficult for them to be able to live within that and continue to provide the services they have. Mostly, as was stated back then, we had 12 vacancies. The good news is 11 are in training to fill those vacancies. But it takes considerable overtime to train those 11. And, um, I guess I'll just plant the seed here that I, 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 it's hard for me to imagine a path forward where we can afford to add those seven that are approved, um, in the spring. Because there again, we will need considerable overtime in order to train those seven. But that's what's approved in the budget on the FTE side. You've authorized a dollar expenditure. I think those two things are going to come hard at each other and we're going to need to do some amendments or change, uh, ultimately through policy, whether there's going to be changes in the FTE additions to the fire department.
Very good, thank you. Um, any further discussion on the motion? Councilmember Troy?
Uh, thank you, Mayor and council. This is just a factual question. I think I know the answer, but, uh, Director Zeller, could the council, I mean, this is where we set our mills for our budget. There isn't any way some, at some later date, we decide, hey, we're going to tack on another mill or make it the maximum.
Uh, Mayor, council, Councilmember Joy, I, I think practically, yes, there is a way. You know, the, the, the state and county did that this last time, uh, across the state, adjusting the school district mills. Um, the reality is that the cost to send out all new tax bills to the citizens, as well as what I would imagine would be the bad publicity, uh, would not be worth it. So, yeah.
Very good, thank you. Any further discussion before we proceed to a vote? Okay, the, uh, the motion is clear. Uh, this is the minimum option. If in favor of the minimum option, uh, please, uh, uh, raise your hand. Voting in favor are councilmembers, uh, Neese, Owen, uh, Kennedy, Aspen Leider, uh, Tidswell, and, uh, Boyet. Uh, if voting in opposition, raise your hand. Voting in opposition, councilmembers, um, uh, Gulick, uh, Joy, uh, uh, Rupes, um, uh, Shaw, and Cole. So the motion passes 6 to 5. I think that concludes this item, right? Very good. Thank you. Thank you for staff working on that and for all the discussion on, uh, two weeks ago. Uh, for anybody's interested in the details, you can go back and look at that discussion, uh, but not tonight. So, uh, we'll move on to item number three. Uh, I apologize. Councilmember Shaw?
Thank you, your honor. Um, I'm going to step out of the meeting now. I wanted to stay so we didn't end up in a terrible 5-5 vote like we did two weeks ago with that last one. Um, but for the record, I just wanted Denise to know that, um, I'm stepping out of the meeting, so I, I won't be voting on anything going forward. And I'll let Mike Boyet, um, fill everybody in on the council legislative and local affairs priorities when that time comes.
Very good. Thank you for that clarification. Um, uh, Denise, would you please read item number three? Or former item number three. I always just refer to, uh, what it is on our agenda.
Mm-hmm. Continued public hearing and resolution creating the city of Billings Planning Commission to comply with the Montana Land Use Planning Act, MLUPA. Staff recommends approval.
Our presenter is Wyeth. Wyeth?
Yes, thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor and council. Um, so just a real quick, um, recap for this item. Um, you initially, excuse me, you initially heard about this back in February when we did an overview of, uh, our implementation of what was Senate Bill 382, which is the Montana Land Use and Planning Act that was enacted by the legislature in 2023. Um, as part of that, uh, multiple components involved in that, one was to adopt a public participation plan, uh, to direct how we would go forward with that effort and actually to use it for other efforts that we would do going forward for, um, for the city. And then, um, formation of a planning commission, or in this case, an interim planning commission, to, uh, work through the process to get the, um, the law basically in place. And then we would put a, a permanent planning commission in place moving forward from there per the law to do, to address, um, future, uh, land use, future land use, uh, issues and, um, some other process that I'll talk about in a minute. Um, so anyway, we, we kind of did that big overview and then in June, you heard, um, the proposal for this planning, interim planning commission. At that point, there were some concerns. The, um, council decided to delay it. Um, we were planning to come back to you on September 9th. Uh, at that meeting, uh, we, uh, it got, um, removed from that agenda. Again, delayed into this meeting. Um, and during those, these last two, um, before we came to you on the 9th and then also with the 23rd, there were some, um, internal, some comments and edits from, uh, the mayor and some council members and whatnot, um, that were discussed. And so I've got some of that to show you and then obviously you can, you can figure out where you want to go from, from here. The idea with this is to get this in place. Uh, we're just about to go out with the RFP for, uh, implementation, the, the actual land use plan and future land use map process that we have to do. Um, and so this commission will be a big part of that process going forward. So. So one of the things I was asked to just to cover is and clarify are the duties of this interim planning commission again and just make sure everyone understands what their role is. Um, and so I guess the main thing to be aware of is that they are going to be making recommendations to you, the city council, on, um, the, the setting up of the new land use plan and future land use map. That's, that's their role. That's what they'll, their main focus will be as we go through here into the next year and a half, uh, till 2026, which is the deadline to get this in place. Um, so they'll be making those recommendations and the focus will be development of the land use plan, the future land use map per the new, uh, state law. And then to follow that, uh, recommendations on any zoning regulations or, uh, map changes that would need to be made to align with the, uh, plan and map, and then also same with subdivision regulations. Um, and then if there's any other legislative issues or things that tie into that that come along, then the council, uh, could also then be designated them to provide recommendations to you. So they're going to be getting information, hearing from the community, hearing from the public, hearing from, um, staff and working through that and then recommending to you those, the actions to actually put the plan and the map in place. Um, and then the duties of the permanent commission are somewhat similar, but there's a few other pieces to this. They're still making recommendations to you, uh, as the elected body, um, and, and, um, doing that going forward. And this would be then in a role of amendments to the land use plan or map in the future, which is also discussed in the new, uh, regulations. Same with, um, then where it gets, it switches a bit. Then they also are going to be recommending, making recommendations to you for zoning regulation amendments and subdivision. Uh, and on the zoning side, just to be clear, part of the big transition after this interim, the interim commission ends and the permanent one begins is that our zoning commission and our board of adjustment actually, uh, get rolled into this commission. So there's no longer, uh, those two other entities making recommendations or taking actions. They would be doing that and, and in cases of map amendments, bringing those to you. Um, the part that's important to realize is that a lot of the process with, um, with the plan in place and the map in place would be administrative. Um, so it would be more where the commission would hear where, um, there was a proposal to literally amend the map and change the land use dramatically in an area, um, and then that would be coming to you. The other thing that they would do is hear appeals of decisions that are made administratively, um, and, um, address those. And then any, again, any other, other legislative issues and things that might come forward. So there's a little bit difference there, but that's, there's this interim that's going to go until 2026 and then we're going to roll into a permanent one, um, at that time. And I guess one thing that's also important that was brought up is the, the plan, the, the way to, that we're expecting to approach this is that you will, um, form this interim commission. They'll go through this initial process. And then in 2026, we will start basically from scratch to form the permanent commission. So it's not that they'll be made up exactly the same. There can be changes, all new people, you know, you have to re, you'll apply at that point. There's, the way we're proposing this now, if, if you're familiar with the resolution, is rolling some existing, uh, positions into this commission to get, to keep some of that experience and expertise that we need for both land, the land use planning, zoning side. But then that commission overall would be, would start, uh, from scratch at that point. So I wanted to go over a few edits to the resolution, proposed edits to the resolution that you have, uh, in your packet. Um, and, uh, and also just mention a few other things that were brought up in discussion that the council obviously can further discuss tonight. Um, but one of the, one of the things that several multiple council members discussed was, uh, we had proposed, um, or the, the resolution was proposing seven members and, uh, there was some interest in potentially adding a couple more seats to provide, um, some additional participation from the community. Uh, since the proposal is, as you're aware, to start off with the five, uh, ward representatives on our planning, our current county planning board that has city representation, have those five positions come into this commission and then have the chair of the zoning commission, the chair of board of adjustment, um, be the other two. This would add two more positions that potentially could be from the community that could be, um, included as well. And then the other, um, and then, and you would appoint them the same way you do other boards and commissions under section 2, 5012 in the city code now. And then, um, the other item that we, uh, that's proposed here to, to be tweaked also was if the zoning commission chair or board of adjustment chair were not, uh, were unable or unwilling to serve, then those could be sought also from the general population and, and represent, uh, from the community. Obviously, the planning board, five would be, you get a representative from each ward, which was part of the whole point of this was to make sure we had the ward representation, but the others could be at large. Um, so that's just to cover those items. There was also discussion, um, kind of regard, or related to whether you want to specify those two positions at large, whether you want those to be from specific organizations. Um, and so that's something obviously the council can discuss tonight. Um, and I sent you an email on Friday, late on Friday about that. I think the, the main concern that, that staff has on that and, and I think the mayor mentioned this as well is, is which org, you know, who's, who are we, who's being picked and who's not being picked? Um, and so how are we, how are we making that versus putting it out there and saying, apply and, you know, you'll, will, will, you, you, the mayor and the council will decide who, who those applicants, uh, would be appointed to the board. Um, a couple of last pieces on terms. There was some concern about identifying when the interim planning commission, um, members, how, when it would start and, and represent, and, uh, the president and secretary, or excuse me, president and vice president, uh, how they would serve. So we did tweak this as well, uh, basically starting at the first meeting that the commission would have after everyone's confirmed and ready to go. Um, and then would go until either May 17th of 2026, which is when we're supposed to have this implemented per state law. The, the formation of the permanent commission, or if someone is, you know, bows out partway through and gets, and you reappoint someone else. And then same with the officers, that they would be elected at the first meeting, uh, when everyone's been, uh, seated basically for that. And then at the beginning of the calendar year going forward, or, or either at the beginning of 2025 and then 2026, since we're going to get to, um, at least into the beginning of 2026. And with that, I'll be happy to answer questions. You've got the, the full background kind of in the memo as well as the resolution with the rest of the elements. We worked, um, quite a bit with, uh, city legal, with Gina and her team on, um, tweaking and perfecting the resolution to make sure it was referencing correctly back to the city code, um, where it needed to, um, in relation to the, to the overall new state law. So happy to answer any questions and, and
Thank you very much.
It is a public hearing also.
Very good. We'll have some just factual questions for, uh, Wyeth and then we'll load up it up for, uh, public hearing. Uh, Councilmember Rupes?
Thank you, Mayor. Wyeth, I wonder if you just spent a minute telling, describing how the land use plan recommendations coming out of the West End and the Heights neighborhood planning process will be dealt with by this interim commission, because it seems like they're making the recommendations, but it's a big part of those, uh, neighborhood plans as well. So can you describe that for me?
Yes, thank you, uh, Councilmember Rupes and Mayor and council. So we, when we put together the scopes for both the West Billings neighborhood plan and the Heights neighborhood plan, which both now are underway. West Billings is, is, is fair mo, is fair, fairly well moving forward. We're going to be having another public meeting here pretty soon and the Heights plan just kicked off in the last several weeks. We actually scoped those and referenced back to this new land, the new Montana Land Use Planning Act and said, in these areas, when, when this effort is being conducted, we want the focus, part of the focus to be on this idea of, okay, what is, what is the development in those areas going to look like? What is the future land use, you know, existing zoning and then future land use, what, what would that look like? So basically those would both feed into this bigger effort to finish the rest of the commu, you know, the rest of the community. Those, the West End and the Heights are very large areas. There's a lot to look at just in those areas. So we scoped it that way. And then when the scope that we're doing for the final portion of this for the rest, you know, to develop the overall land use plan and map references those and says, okay, when you're working on this, don't think you're starting from scratch. You have these two big areas that have been analyzed and are going to feed into that and look at, you know, housing need and, and stuff like that, that's, that's spelled out in the law. So we basically set it up so that those will inform the rest of this effort too, and then the whole thing, you know, then when we build the plan and the map, we'll already have some information from those two areas to like, to inform those parts of the city. So that's the way it's been put together and the way we're expecting to go forward.
Councilor Ripses?
Thank you. So will they have, will the interim commission have information or will they have the maps?
No, they'll, so the, the commission will get both the, the, we're going to be starting with them to say, okay, now we're, you know, we're developing the overall land use plan and map for the city, but here's, yeah, they're going to see and hear about the information coming from those two areas of town and then the rest of it. So they'll, they'll be basically getting the whole picture ultimately, that then when they recommend to you, it'll have all that together.
Thank you much. Wyeth, I'll just comment and then ask you a question. One, I did have a phone call, just people need to know with Roger Graveguard, who's represents Ward Two on the planning board. He's already got a day job. He's already got his planning board job, which the planning board will continue, these other, and, and the Board of Appeals and the Board of Adjustment will continue, or I'm sorry, the zoning commission and the Board of Adjustment will continue. And then he's recently signed up to work on the steering committee for the Heights neighborhood plan. So he didn't really need a third job or a fourth job, whatever the number is. So in all likelihood, he will decline to serve on this interim, so that'll open up another position in Ward Two, just sort of a heads up for others. My question for you, Wyeth, is you, you mentioned that you'd be sending out an RFP soon relating to the map and plan. To, to whom for what? Is this for a consultant?
Yeah. Yeah, that, we're basically, yeah, exactly. And, and the council approved funding for that actually last, the previous fiscal year and we've carried it over because we're still, we were still trying to get to that point. And so yes, it, it's to get services to help us develop the overall effort with the land use plan. I mean, it's, and the map, and then also that entity and, or that, those, this group and that, whoever's chosen will also then be looking at the information that came from the, the two plans to put all that together for this effort. And there's a big component in this part on the housing analysis that we have to conduct that, again, there's information going to be fed from the two neighborhood plans, but we have to do that for the entire city to basically, to meet the law. You have to be able to say, this is the expected amount of housing demand we're going to have going forward and how are we going to meet it and where are those houses or, or using, units going to be? So we have to drill into that. So that has a big chunk of that as well. And just to mention, I guess to follow up on your comment earlier, one of the things that's very, I think, confusing and certainly is challenging for all of us is that since this is new law, until the, until we've actually approved and enacted and implemented that, we're still under the current laws of the state. And so that's why we have to keep running the county planning board with city representation, the zoning commission, the board of adjustment. Those things have to keep going right now because we haven't changed yet. When we change, that's when we do, we will switch over with the, the permanent commission and also those other things will change. And it's raised a, a variety of challenges, but that's, it gets confusing because those roles and responsibilities are not going away right now. They can't go away until we're
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any other questions for Wyeth before we open up public hearing? I don't see any. So, okay, this is a public hearing. If anybody would like to comment on item number three, the interim planning commission, now is your opportunity. Please come to the podium. Just ask that you tell us your name and address. Keep your comments to three minutes. Would anybody like to comment on item number three? Okay, no one is coming forward, so we'll close the public hearing. Council, how would you like to proceed? Councilmember Ripses?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just go ahead and get the motion out on the table. Having conducted a public hearing, considering written and spoken public testimony, I move to approve a resolution creating the City of Billings Planning Commission to comply with the Montana Land Use Planning Act as recommended by staff.
Very good. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Owen. Any discussion before we proceed to vote? Councilmember Owen and Councilmember Nice.
Mayor
Oh, and I apologize. Did you want to speak to your motion? Did you have your hand up?
No.
Okay, Councilmember Owen.
Mayor, I don't need to speak to the second either, but I did want to offer some amendments to the resolution. These have been circled to, circulated to council members and to the public in advance. So I begin with the first one. Mayor, I move to approve paragraph three of the resolution as follows. The interim planning commission shall consist of nine members, five previously appointed by the city council, two the county planning board from each ward, chair of the zoning commission, chair of the board of adjustment, the executive director of the Home Builders Association of Billings, and the executive director of the Billings Association of Realtors. Then there's a subsequent modification that would just simply allow if those positions are unavailable, as the mayor has indicated, they would be pursued at large.
Okay, very good. So is, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Aspilider. Okay, do you want to speak to your motion?
Please, Mayor, thank you. I concur with the staff's recommendation that we move this from nine mem, from seven members to nine. And I have indicated here two options that I think make sense. I think it's important that we have a balance of perspective in this interim phase. I think staff is right to say that when we do the permanent commission, it needs to be a different process. I would assume it will be an at-large process, but in my opinion, we need a commission that looks a little bit more like a community and a little bit more like, and, and represents a little bit more diverse perspectives. Specifically here, these entities are recommended because they are the most likely and largest, most consistent end users of the map and the process that comes out of here. And I think that gives us a perspective that's independent from the city's process. It makes sense to have the, the planning board members and the zoning commission members and the board of adjustment, but at the end of the day, those are the, those are the city's committees and they're intended to sit here as members of the city's committees. And I think it's useful to have some external perspective weighing in on this. I, I think these individuals are, are experts in their field. I think they will bring a good balance of discussion. It's only two of the nine votes, so I don't think it tips it in balance of any particular constituency, but I think as the end users and as leaders in this community, they can help the committee look a little bit more like the community. And so I would recommend and ask council members to support this amendment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Councilmember Ripses?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'd just ask a point of clarification from Wyeth. When I made the motion, I understood that SAS recommendation was nine members and the two extra were at large. Is that, is that consistent or did I state something wrong or wasn't clear enough in my motion?
Councilmember Ripses and Mayor Council, no, that was correct. That was the recommendation. This, this
Okay, so, so this amendment specifically just to say that those two extra shouldn't be at large, they should just, they should be designated for those two?
And, and I, yes, and I think to make clear that then if those positions couldn't be filled by those people, they would be appointed at large.
They would become at large if they were not available.
Correct, which is already in the resolution itself. It just adds them to that last sentence of paragraph three. And it's typed in the email if people need to look at it.
Okay, thank you. Any other, just further discussion on, on the motion?
I, I think I'll probably just not vote in favor of this one specifically because I think they should be at large in general and then happy to see those apply and, and come through and, and be approved through the normal process.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion. Councilmember Nice, Councilmember Joy?
Thank you, Mayor. I kind of wish I would have asked this question earlier, but because as the motion was made as recommend by, recommended by staff, I'm holding the document that was recommended by staff in my hand and it doesn't talk about nine members. What we saw in our presentation tonight was nine members, but it's not, we don't, there was some other, there were some other things that staff recommended that I'm not sure if that's included or not. So I think it's really hard to understand what we're actually, what Councilmember Ripses' motion was if what we're adopting is not what was in our packet.
And my understanding is the motion was to approve what is in the packet as amended by Wyeth's presentation.
Okay, can we see that, what was amended in?
On the screen, we did in, in his oral discussion, but not
I suppose in the future, when there's amendments like that, can we get those in writing to us?
Actually, Mayor, if I may, Councilmember Nice and Mayor and Council, Mr. Friday did actually send that out on Friday with the amendments
With these, these new changes.
But, but the amendments are, the staff recommendations not necessarily consistent with Councilmember Owens.
Right. And so this is
So there is a, there is, was a draft that went out too.
Okay, so this is what's being, what is recommended by staff. Wasn't there another section that was being changed as well?
There's two others.
Yeah, this, these, these two areas. So section three, four, and 10.
Okay, and these were all sent out Friday. I'm sorry, I missed that email.
Councilmember Joy?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I, I'm not sure if I want to support the motion and it isn't because I don't think that the industry has a lot of ideas. What I've, what I felt like, what some of the takeaways from having gone through a lot of meetings when their code was being rewritten, rewritten is that private industry has a business model. Their business model is how they make their money, which isn't a bad thing. What happens though in, in committees is that in order to keep your business model running, you need to maintain a status quo of regulation. And when that regulation, when there's push from the community to change that regulations, very often industry, that's their business model, they really don't like a change in regulation that messes with the business model, which is just how it is. So I, I, two members isn't very large, but I, I have, I have some concerns that if the community is really pushing for something different, we may not have those voices heard because once you have a business model, it's what you do. Thank you.
Very good. Any further discussion on the motion? I'll just comment, I, I will vote against it. I, I, it's, I, I know the organizations, the people, they, I'm sure they're fine, but it makes me very nervous to assign two guaranteed seats to any industry group and I just would fear that we would lose credibility if that were the case, regardless of what the result is. But if that, if this passes, I'm sure we will get through that just fine. So for, any further discussion? Councilmember Nice?
Yeah, Mayor, actually I like the idea of having these particular two groups in there. I think they represent a lot of the subgroups that they actually do do the development and are in the community. So I think these two that, just alone represent a lot of these other groups. So I, I will support this. I think this is a good idea to have some of the more community and who's going to be actually utilizing these plans, you know, out there. I, you know, they're the developers, other ones are going to be building these things and I think they need to have a say in, in what's going on, so, thank you.
Okay, Councilor, Wyeth, you did
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I just want to clarify, so the, what I sent on Friday gave a summary of the information, you, the actual amendments are what you're seeing on the screen. So I did share with Gina the, these changes, but I just want to make sure you guys are clear, like you didn't get the, in a brand new resolution, you just got the summary and then I'm, I described them here. So just to make sure everybody's not looking for the email.
Thank you, I was.
Yeah, very good. All righty. Okay, Councilmember Joy?
I just have a question for City Attorney Doll, who is in conference right now. My question is, can, if you have a, I don't know exactly how this board is going to, going to function, but if you put, if you're putting down a map, you're setting zoning, you're using the land use law, will it be a conflict of interest for the industry representatives on the board to be voting on the, essentially their industry and essentially being able to, is that a conflict of interest? Thank you.
Councilmember Joy, Mayor and Council, I'm going to have Gina, I know there was a sidebar conversation going on. So to, to understand your question, Councilmember Joy, which is, is it a conflict to appoint two industry representatives to this board? My speculation, have Gina help me, is no, because they wouldn't have, it would be very unlikely they would have some kind of personal financial gain from something that they're working on to this policy level. But I'm going to need Gina to help. That, that would be my response. That is my response.
Gina, go ahead and comment.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, that you would have to consider if there was the personal, financial, some, some sort of actual interest, something they're benefiting. If, if they're discussing policy, that's probably not going to implicate a conflict.
I have a follow-up question.
Okay, go ahead.
So in, suppose you have a meeting, I'm going to just kind of call back on my own memory. If you're regulating the size of a sign, an advertisement, and the people on the committee represent the sign companies, how, how much is that policy? I mean, you get down to the details of how many feet, inches, how much of a building space can be covered by a sign? I mean, is that, I don't think that this particular commission is looking to get into that much detail, but is, would it be, if you got to that point, would it be a conflict to, for an industry making signs to say, we don't want smaller signs because they charge per square foot or whatever? I mean, just as an example, thank you.
Yeah. Then we'll proceed to vote as soon as we can. Councilmember, Gina, did you want to comment further or Chris?
Councilmember Joy, my response to that is, I, I, I don't think, I think your example is actually a good one and a very direct one, and I've seen it everywhere I work. The sign industry, in this case, an industry, engineers, planners, land use planners, architects, can they be involved in the policy development process? And, and the answer is unequivocally yes, they can. Ultimately, it's up to the 11U to determine what you want as a balance, but specifically to a conflict on creating policy, it's going to be very unlikely that they'll technically have a conflict. Specific projects or, you know, developments or prod, uh, sale of a sign, yes, they would fall into conflict, but not in policy development, which is what this board will be doing.
Okay, let, let's, a ready vote. Council, again, this is on the amendment that would give the HBA, Home Builders Association and Billing Association Realtors seats on this interim board. If in favor of the proposed amendment, please raise your hand. Voting in favor, Councilmembers Nice, Owen, Kennedy, Aspilider, Tidswell, and Boyet. If voting in opposition, Councilmembers Gulick, Ripses, Cole, and, did I leave anybody else? So anyway, it, it, the motion passes. Joy? Okay, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so we're, we're down one to five, or I'm sorry, to 10 and the motion passes six to four. So that was the amendment, but we still have the underlying now amended motion. Councilmember Owen, further discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, apologies, I had a second amendment that I had circulated in my email. One of the concerns that I think we hear a lot when we do these sort of big policy documents is that the public, the residents, the neighbors really want to make sure that their, their input is considered. And I think Wyeth is correct in pointing out that we have a really, a robust public engagement plan, but I would offer an amendment, and I had circulated this to council as well, that would just ask that this commission sit down in actual working sessions with what we call our adjacent neighborhood committee, which is the chair of all the task forces. This is a chance for the people who are really just good civic volunteers who care about their neighborhoods to sit down as equals with this really important commission and share some ideas, ask some questions, debate ideas in a way that isn't always allowed in sort of a public hearing in sort of a public hearing, or a public comment, or a more structured process. So I think this is a pretty light lift, it's asking for two meetings over the course of 20 months. The amendment, as I have it, would simply add a new sentence after the sentence, second sentence in paragraph eight, which says the interim planning commission shall hold at least two working sessions jointly with the adjacent neighborhood committee of the city of Billings, and I would make that motion now, Mayor.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Kennedy. Any further discussion? You've spoken your-
Yeah, I don't, I don't need to belabor the point.
Wyeth, I'm just going to ask you whether the motion is adequately clear to you before we have further discussion.
Mayor and Council, yes, it's, that's fine, we're already, as I pointed out in my email on Friday, we're already going to be doing that, so.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion on the motion? Councilmember Neese?
Mayor, thank you, I appreciate this, this amendment, because I truly believe that our task force are really, are linked to the community, it's really a grassroots in that, so these, these chairs are really important to be, know what's going on within these changes and this commission, to report back to the community, so I look forward to this, and I'm thankful that Councilmember Owen has made this amendment to include the task force with this, thank you.
Very good. Any further discussion on this proposed amendment? Before we proceed to vote? Don't see any, so we'll move, if the motion, if the motion is clear, if in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. If opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Now we have twice amended, underlying motion, which is now before you, previously made and seconded, is there any further discussion on the amended motion? Before we proceed to vote? Okay, if in favor of the twice amended motion, please say aye. Aye. If opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously, that concludes item number three. Council, I apologize, we got 7:30, and I rolled right past your break time, we're, I don't think we're quite ready to wrap it up, so let's take a brief break, and it's 8:02, we'll be back before, it's 8:03, we'll be back and start before 8:10.
We received any applications yet?
Not that I know of, but that doesn't mean that's the case, but we encourage as many applications as possible.
Great, I'll go ahead and send it to you-know-who. So, I just want to go over real quickly the funding history, we actually have not, we received earlier today, questions about how much money we've been giving to organizations over the past five years, but I can tell you that we have not granted funding to outside organizations since 2012, and the reason that, the reason we have two allocations recently were funding issued by the, during the pandemic. So the 909126 is a special allocation, that was the coronavirus funding, and we did a lot of park improvements with that, and then the 1.2 million is the home ERP program that you just voted on tonight, so that's not money that comes back year after year, so we've only done that twice. And you can see the, kind of the plummet from 1.3 million dollars down in 2012, when it was 885,000 dollars, and that's when the city council made a policy decision to fund loan applications instead of grant applications, so, just kind of an FYI there. So, I'm reporting today on CDBG, CDBG-CB, the coronavirus funding, and home, we had nine first-time home buyers, including the foreclosure program. We actually got this definite property sold, and it has ziriscaping in the front yard, so there is no watering, no use of water, it is a huge property in the heights, so if anybody drives by there, it goes on and on forever, and it's a beautiful, brand-new property, it is a modular home. We do have a 1.2 million dollar project that was just approved by city council, but we had actually been working on that application since last August, and Mitchell Court Affordable Housing Development, 32 units, they're closing their big funding package, I think it's over 10 million dollars next week, so we're pretty excited about that. Oh, let me just back up real quick, I've also received, we've also received another application from GL Development, the company that is putting this together, for another project, I forget how many units, I think it's may, maybe 24 units, and they were heard by the CD Board, do you remember, it's 24 units? Yeah, 24, and it, it's down, I think, around Jackson, and they're looking for a million dollars from, from the home program, and so that application is received, you'll be seeing that, I think in the coming months, I think it's going to take us a little bit of time to get, you know, caught up with Gina's absence. And we also received inquiries from Homefront and Homeward, who are putting together another big project, and they asked about available funding, they're going to apply for 1.5 million dollars, and I know, I've been working on funding, and I think we have at least 900,000 to allocate there, so we're going to be in the affordable housing development business with three potential projects, so we're really excited about that, and that was actually a city council priority that was established in 2022 in April. So you've seen some of these photos before, last year when I made this presentation, we were still waiting for solar lighting, and passive solar lighting, too, so it's very low lighting until somebody walks underneath it, and then it brightens, so the neighborhood isn't blindingly bright the entire time, but then in Comanche Park, you can kind of see a little before picture up there. We also have the city's first sensory pathway for, for neurodivergent population, or just, you know, kids to play on, and of course, the, the basketball pad art, so those are, that has all come into fruition, and we are able to close out that project this year. Zimmerman, so at Pioneer Park, we had, of course, we had a very big heritage trail project that was completed, and the restroom accessibility, touchless features, and exterior pair, I'm not sure if you all recall, but the moisture, the moisture was gathering underneath the paint in the restroom, and it was just peeling off all the time, that restroom has been, the walls have been dried out, and graffiti proof paint has been placed on the sides there, and they've already had to, they just use a spray wash, washer to take graffiti off, which they've already had to do this year, so that project is, has closed this year, absolutely beautiful, if you haven't been down there to see it. And at North Park, we still have a, we still have a final punch list for the adult exercise equipment, and a, a big new pavilion, and the exercise equipment overlooks the new playground there, and then we replaced, I think it was a 1970's, I think it was a forest service, like bomb shelter bathroom, a concrete bathroom, with this new, with this new unit, so I think that we do have board members from North Park, they're very excited about all those improvements. So, we just, I just want to review goals for the upcoming year, I need to hire a staff person, train them, and we have to finish moving, so we're, we're officeless and winging it without a printer, so that's absolutely more challenging than one could ever imagine. We're looking towards compliance for our current awardees, projects and programs, where, as you know, we're moving into a, a five-year consolidated planning process, we still have to keep an eye on our timeliness for CDBG timeliness expenditures. We're also in the upper-right corner looking at SEPTED projects, we're trying to work with the Parks Department to organize assessments and project lists for a few of those parks, because you allocated 100,000 dollars, and I do have a bit of coronavirus funding left, about 28,000, I think, that we can allocate for those touchless features, for coronavirus prevention response. Those would have to go both to Community Development Board and the Parks Board to review before it comes to city council for final decision, and we'll start the request for bids process after that is all completed. Of course, I mentioned Mitchell Court and the two new applications, GL Development, they called it Skyview, just FYI, I kind of went, oh, okay, so, Skyview, from GL Development, and then Homefront and Homeward, I'm not sure if they're, if the name of that development is, has been, I think it's been announced here, but, you know, I, I heard it wasn't solidified yet. So we all, also implementing the home ERP program, and the next steps were happening tonight, legal implementation, monitoring and compliance, and those funds have to be expended by 2030, so. That's everything, I think, we're just holding a public hearing, and we don't have to have action.
Very good, let's have some questions for Brenda, if you'd like, and then we'll have our public hearing. Councilmember Kennedy?
Brenda, is, is that money that's allocated for the parks that goes to the park board, can that be used for lighting in parks?
Mm-hmm.
Because we have a lot of parks that need lighting, and, so, I, I would like to, Ms. Rose Park, could it be included?
I would have to look at the demographics around the park, because it has to be located in a low-income neighborhood, but if it's on the list, lighting is part of the SEPTED assessments, and, and we've been following the city council's lead on that since it had been mentioned, probably, it started being mentioned, what, 18 months ago or so? So.
I know we're going to do optimists as being done, would South Park be included?
South Park is actually in a zone that is very challenging because of its proximity to the refinery and the cryo tanks located there, and actually, half of North Park diagonally, if you cut North Park in half, the south part of that, southeastern part, is also within that zone.
Can we cut South Park in two?
Well, I wish we could, but it's encompassed the entire, it's, it is a one-mile radius from those cryo tanks, and, and HUD is really serious about that. If we touch it, if we touch a project with $1 of federal funding, the entire, the entire project has to be, has to be engineered to withstand any kind of incidents that might happen from the refinery, which would jack the prices way up for everything, so.
Thank you.
Very good.
By the way, our board loves South Park, and they really want to do stuff at South Park, and we're really heartbroken about this change with HUD.
Could we move the refinery?
Well, we figured that they could take their cryo tanks out.
Maybe not, okay, maybe not, that would be good.
If they just move them, you know, further away, that would be great.
Thank you, Mayor, two comments and a question, if I could. Number one, Brenda, thank you for updating to reference the city's openness to offering public lands up for, for sale. public lands up for, for sale and fulfillment. I saw that in there, thank you. The other comment is, page 28, there's a link to a Billings pattern guide. It doesn't seem to exist. So, either we have the link wrong, I couldn't find it on just general Google search or something. That would be really useful to have, so I hope it exists.
It's so great. You will love seeing it.
Okay, so, yeah, I'd love to know what the link to that is. Question that I had, page 24, it's talking about other actions that could be done to improve affordable housing developments. And, and our comment is, the following issues may act as barriers to affordable housing development. Bullet one is density bonuses have not been established to offset the cost of development. And the third bullet, city does not currently permit a waiver or reduction of impact fees, including water waste management to promote affordable housing development. Can we bring those forward? Can we make those proposals? Can you guys bring those to us and let us pass them?
If we could make decisions for other departments, we'd make lots of changes, but we'd absolutely have to work with Public Works to see. But I, I, we would love to see that happen. It's just never happened in the past, and it's never even been entertained when we brought, brought that up. But you are the city council, and you get to do initiatives and move things like this forward.
Councilmember Rupstas?
Chris, can we look into that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
That's awesome, by the way.
And there may be a question, you know, with impact fees, because if they don't pay, somebody else has to. So, the legal impacts of that are obvious, or not, are not obvious, but would need to be investigated. But other questions for Brenda? Any other questions for Brenda before we have our public hearing? I don't see any. So, we will open up for public hearing. This is a requirement that the CAPER, the Comprehensive Annual Performance Evaluation Report by Community Development, be set for public hearing. So, please tell us your name and address, even if you need no introduction, go ahead and tell us anyway. Rebecca.
Hello, thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Rebecca Knoll. I live at 1109 Lewis Avenue. I just wanted to take a brief moment tonight to talk about my experience with the Community Development Department. I have served on the board since 2017. So, when I did step onto the board at first, housing was an issue in the fact that everyone needs to live somewhere, or everyone wants to live somewhere, right? So, but during my time on the board, housing has moved from being truly an issue in our community to a crisis in our nation, and a crisis in Montana. So, as the biggest city in Montana, I feel like our, the department that I've had the privilege of working with has, has really been a leader in trying to come up with solutions and just trying to see the best path forward for all of our neighbors here in Billings. Just in my time working with the department, I have continually seen a demonstration of deep institutional knowledge, of integrity, and just really, what's the word, competence on the part of the staff. And just know that they really honestly have the interests of our neighbors and the people who live in Billings in their hearts every day as they do their work. And I really, I want to thank Brenda. Thanks, Brenda. Thanks, Carly. Thanks, Tam. She's not here. Thanks, Director Friday. It's been a privilege, honestly, to work with the department. And I feel really that we've accomplished a lot. And I hope that the board can continue to work with the department in the future and just keep moving Billings forward and keep accomplishing things and keep helping all of our neighbors. Because we all deserve to have a great life in Billings. So, thank you, guys. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. Is there any other public comment? This is a public hearing. Please come forward. Any other public comment? Look, you're, you're hesitating. Did you want to comment? But, but if, but if you did, you'd need to come to the microphone. Go ahead. You can come to the microphone.
First off, I give you, oh, you folks, so much credit.
Can we just ask you your name?
My name is Denver Slater, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Cole, Mr. Kennedy, gentlemen, ladies of the council, thank you so much for the couple of minutes here. You've got an awful lot on your plate, I know that. I so commend you for the efforts that you do. Honest to gosh, your tireless efforts to improve this community are just, are so notable and outstanding. Thank you, 100 thank you from all of the community. We, we so appreciate that. What I had initially come here for, and still do, still would, I'd like to, very briefly, I've addressed your, your counsel before regarding the Montana Rescue Mission. Some of you perhaps recall my prior comments on a couple of occasions. I want to reiterate real quickly where we were, where we left off, and a couple of updates. I have an issue with Mr. Matt Lundgren, the executive director, as you all well may know. And for an example, I used to live there at the Montana Rescue Mission years ago. I worked there. I worked in a kitchen. That is an industrial-sized kitchen down in that basement, still there, not utilized at all, at all. We used to serve over 200 meals a day to the south side, to the people, to any homeless person, old or young, that would come to us. Breakfast was for the men that were in the program. Lunch and dinner was for the community, 200 meals a day. Matt Lundgren killed it. Better, that's better, or worse. We had a hygiene center in the lower level, about the size of your committee room, so well-stocked, professionally staffed. My own primary care provider, Kami Doak, diagnosed my hernia before a doctor could. They, they were, they were dealing with, with female hygiene, with nut scrapes, issues, proactivity, everything from, from viruses to mental illness. It was a department. It was wonderfully well-stocked. It was clean, and Matt killed it, just like that. No reason why. The nurses and the doctors that, they were, they were aghast. They were given no reason whatsoever, none whatsoever. I've talked with Deb, who is at Healthcare for the Homeless, as well as Kami and Jenny, and there's no reason for them to do it. Further, what a wonderful concept it is, the 1.6 million dollars that they're improving, that outstanding foresight. If it was Mr. Lundgren, I don't believe it was.
So, time ran off, so if you could wrap up, Mr. Slater, go ahead.
Yes, sir, very quickly. They had a grand opening a couple of weeks ago, the Balfour and West, what a wonderful thing it was. The head cook, the chef, hired away from the Doubletree, great big black man, Afro-American, one-armed, by the name of Buffalo, he's a good, good friend of mine. He says, Denver, Matt Lundgren runs a cult, a cult, a cult. The 13 men, or up to 13, 18, that are residing there, yes, sir, he, they must turn over their food stamps, their social security, all of their funding. He keeps a third of it. They worked for nothing at the stores, which brings me to last Saturday. Last Saturday, I walked into the Montana Rescue Mission fifth store on 24th Street Grant.
And Mr. Slater, I think you're going to have probably a lot of these examples. So, what I encourage you, since your time is up, is send us an email.
A Bible. The, the girl, there was a lead girl there, the head manager, she said, I wish we could have a Bible, I wish we had bibles. So did two of the other staff members last week, so we can get a Bible. I was in there last, two days ago, last Saturday, requesting a Bible. And a gentleman, I use that term loosely, by the name of Don, said, I am the manager, and we serve millions, we have millions of Bible. We get them all the time, we get them out all the time. I asked him for one, can I have one? He said, I'm going to show you the door. I escorted out.
So, Mr. Slater, if you would, just send us an email.
My point was, does Matt Lundgren know about a firm called the Gideon's? Gideon's, they supply a Bible or two, they would for the Montana Rescue Mission. Secondly, Walmart sells a beautifully hard-down Bible.
Mr. Slater, we understand it, but I'm afraid, I'm afraid your time's going to have to be up. But feel free to send us an email. Okay? But feel free to send us a, an email. Okay, thank you. Very good. Is there any other public comment on this item number four? Any other public comment on item number four? No one is coming forward, so we'll close the public hearing. There's no action on item number four. I think that concludes that item. Bringing us to the end of our regular agenda, we earlier moved item 1M, the Resolution Establishing Legislative Priorities for the 2025 Legislature, to this end spot. So, we've tagged Councilmember Boyet to represent the committee. We, we don't have a staff presentation on this. You've had it in your, in your packet, you've seen it. So, I'm going to ask Councilmember Boyet to put a motion on the floor, and we can have further discussion at that point. Councilmember Boyet?
Okay, thank you. I move that we approve the resolution establishing priorities for the state of Montana's Legislature 2025 session.
Second by Councilmember Joy. You have a motion on the table. Councilmember Boyet, could we further ask you to give us a little bit of background here? And it's up to you.
Well, we had a, I mean, a very good meeting. We had the chamber there, the bar, the Billings Realtor Association was there, and the Gazette was there. And we spent, oh, about an hour, just kind of going over everything, as well as Jessica was there, and we, and Chris, and everybody was there. And we, we went through a lot of things. We changed some, we added some. And one of the things I had brought up was the fact that, is it the, the city, the League of Cities is going to have their meeting and approve their agenda in October?
Yeah, well, just next week. I'm on the resolution committee, so those resolutions are done, but they have not been approved by the council. If anybody wanted to see drafts, I guess I can send those out. I'm not sure. I think you'll find them very consistent with past years.
My one thought was to wait on our agendas until we saw what they were, to see if there's any major differences or things continued. But a lot of this, ours was general information. It wasn't hard and fast. It says for the state to find other money other than our taxpayers, and a lot of generalized things. And it's, it's pretty easy to review this, but that's about it.
Very good. And Jessica has put these up on the screen, just FYI, and we can ask Jessica to comment if she wants to. Councilmember Slater?
I'd agree with Councilmember Boyet. I, just principally, I have, I have trouble passing a resolution that supports something that has not been adopted by the League of Cities and Towns without having seen it. Like, we haven't even seen those things yet. Understanding that they may be very similar to what's been done in the past, I just think it's bad procedure and bad policy to adopt those things blindly without having seen them. I don't think it hurts us. We're still well ahead of schedule to postpone this until the league meeting is done next week and put this on in October for approval. We're still way ahead of the legislative stuff. So, it would, I would feel better if we, if we postponed this and moved it forward. So, with that, I'll do a substitute motion to table this to a later date as determined by the city administrator, once the, the league has approved their resolutions and those have been passed out to the council to review.
Second by Councilmember Kennedy. Any discussion now on the substitute motion? Councilmember Gulik, Joy, Nice?
Point of order, I think we don't want to say table, right? I think it's delay or.
Delay, yeah, because table would have the result of killing it, and I don't think that was the intent, right? So, just delay it to a, a point to where staff would put it on a later agenda, presumably in later October. Okay, so that, there's the motion. That's consistent with your, second, I assume, Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes, I have a question.
Since we're, we'll ask you to speak to your motion, so Councilmember Kennedy, and then we'll go back to Gulik, Joy, and Nice.
I would just ask, in the interim, I looked at the public safety. The one thing that I, I would like to see, I know, supporting legislation for to expand incarceration, things like that. We've already talked about law enforcement on our streets. Why aren't we supporting a piece that would be legislative dollars coming to local communities to help? We had talked during one of our budget hearings with the Attorney General, asking, telling us that he would do whatever to support. I think we should at least put that piece into there, even if it's just a place saver, to try to get our legislators to look at some funding for, we're the largest city, and we're, it would be very helpful if we got some help for law enforcement. Thank you.
And, and you're talking about our local county jails opposed to the state, the final bullet there, is that correct? Because the, the final bullet deals with expanding our incarceration capacity at the state level, i.e. Deer Lodge, but you're talking about the local jail?
Yes, I would like to see the local jail, and I'd also like to see funding for law enforcement. I mean, if we're going to ask for things and we're going to put it a part of, a part of our agenda, I'd just like to see those two pieces for public safety. Because those are the two things that are real important for public safety in our community.
Okay. I'll just ask, is the legislative committee scheduled to meet? When would it normally meet? It could take up that issue and the, the details of.
October.
Coming up relatively soon, right? Okay, so, they could take that up?
Thank you.
Okay, again, the motion, the substitute motion, I'd recognize Councilmembers Gulik, Joy, and Nice. Councilmember Gulik, did you want to address the motion?
I would just say, I don't mind having a delay. I do appreciate the committee, Legislative Committee, bringing this forward for our consideration and, but yeah, I'm fine with a delay.
Okay, Councilmember Joy, Councilmember Nice?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I, part of our discussion, and something I kind of support, is for us to have general enough ideas of what we'd like to support, that as the bills come forward, they, we can really look at it and, and see if they fit in one of our buckets of general support. One of the things that legislators are very clear on when they have spoken to the committee is you need to be out there in front. Drafting bills, particularly appropriation bills, is a awesomely long project. And if you, as hundreds of bills are put in for drafting, your, particularly appropriations, because you have to get on the docket to get them into the correct committees in order to get them through to the, to the floor of the, of the legislature, this is incredibly long process, complicated, so that the sooner you get a bill that you would like drafted, to get it drafted as soon as possible, to get it out there, get it into the committees and before the floor. So, I, based on the, kind of the comments that were made by various legislatures of all different political perspectives, the process for getting something done really means we need to be out there and thinking about what we want now. We did discuss the fact that the league is going to be setting its priorities, and we move forward with this just to have council have an opportunity to look at it before the, before the league. So, I don't know, kind of a switch in mindset, I guess. So, I, I won't support the, the delay. I don't think it's really necessary. They're big buckets. As we get into the legislative session, and there are hundreds of bills being churned out, I think we have buckets that we can put them into. of bills being churned out, um, I think we have buckets that we can put them into specifically whether or not they're, they're within that, uh, those top priorities. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Nice, Councilmember Rowan?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first of all, I wanna make a correction to item number three under the economic development. When it talks about the task force being the model room, uh, we do not have a minimum of five to one. It's a minimum of five for one, so that does need to be corrected to make sure that we're...
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna call point of order. I think the, the motion was to table this. This is not about correcting...
It, when it comes back. It just, I'm, I'm just notifying them there, so when it comes back, that, that there's a correction there. And, and so, and, and to speak towards the motion, um, I, I will say, um, that I, I guess I'm not too apt to say that's, I mean, there's a lot of things that we don't know yet. And so I, I think that, but I, I also agree with Council, Councilwoman Joy on this is because as the Chair of the Legislative Committee last year during the session, it was extremely difficult to be able to get legislators on board if we as a committee didn't have the council approval on a particular item. We'd have to talk to them first. And so, um, having something right now where you can work with legislators today on, on what our local issues are, uh, that have been addressed in this area, and then we can come back and amend it in October if we want to, what, for what the league has said or the governors committees have said. I think to have our local stuff here now, to work with our local legislators who are not running for election, those guys, those guys and gals can create bills now to be put in that our, our committee could be working with to move those forward before anyone's even elected. So, um, I, I won't support the motion, but I would ask the, the, us to consider something different that hasn't been, is to maybe adopt this tonight, believing the league blank to be determined at the end of October, and the governor's report, since I don't think that's final, is to be determined at the end of. And so we would look at this stuff, adopt this resolution tonight with those items blank to be continued, and then, um, uh, look at, again, in, at the end of October, so we can then address any of those other issues. But I think we need to get the committee started on some of these issues. Um, so I, I'm, I'm not gonna support the motion because I think it's important to make sure the committee has some definite things that, that, uh, we can start working with legislators today. I would love to see entertaining motion to maybe without the league stuff now and without the governor's stuff until later.
When you say you would love to, is that...
I can't, I can't make a substitute motion cuz one's already on the table.
Um, yeah, Gina, so, uh, substitute motion can't be amended and also, uh, we just have to vote this one up or down. We can't have a substitute to, to a substitute. Is that correct?
Sorry. You can only have two amendments pending at once, and a substitute motion is technically a motion to amend. So you can have, once you, if you have an amendment, you can have a substitute, but once you have a substitute, you can't have another motion to amend, if that makes sense.
Uh, okay, so we could not have a substitute motion to the substitute motion. Is that what you're saying?
That's, that's correct. You, you need to vote on this, you need to vote on the substitute first.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. Um, but that's what you would like to see if it...
That's what I would like to see. Thank you.
Okay. All right, very good. Uh, Councilmember Rowan?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm not quite sure how to give my comment without triggering a bunch of points of order, so I'm gonna try to do my best here. Um, I will support the motion. I think it, it is not credible for us to pass a resolution saying we endorse proposals that we haven't seen yet. I respectfully disagree with my colleague. I think the Legislative Committee can do work. They could say what, exactly what is true. This is what our committee is proposing. We'd like to discuss some concepts with you. We're waiting on final council approval, but let's talk about what this will look like. So I don't see this as impinging on the Legislative Committee's, um, ability. However, if the motion does pass, then I don't think we'll have a chance to give other input, and I would like to give some other input. So just very briefly, um, I completely agree with what Councilmember Kennedy said. We absolutely should be specific that we would support partnerships with the state or funding with the state to address the costs of Yellowstone County Detention Facility, particularly because we hold so many people pending DOC transfer. Um, this is the, the county commission is working incredibly hard on developing a proposal for voters, and I think, um, any opportunity to offset those costs landing on property owners is a good idea. Um, the second thing I would ask, and this is just a question, I think, to the committee members, is whether or not the intention was a blanket, no matter what, support of Medicaid expansion. Cuz as I understand it, there's a couple of proposals and they might look different. And so I assume that the Legislative Committee will just generally support Medicaid reauthorization, and then as proposals get more narrow, there would be an opportunity to discuss those. But I just wanted to understand if, if somebody could answer that question, if it was a overall, no matter what, we're gonna support any proposal for reauthorization. So sorry if that violates procedure, but in the event that this is put off, I just wanted to get my comments on the record.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's relevant because, um, the issue of how we address these details is gonna impact the motion itself, whether we wanna put it off. So, so we'll allow that. Councilmember Boyet, can you address the Medicaid expansion intent?
Representative Yakovich was at one of our meetings and he said that the, uh, there was two things that the legislature was gonna work on. One was property tax and second was Medicaid expansion plan. He didn't have any specifics, but he said, yes, that's a target. Um, I think we'll have to listen to the legislature and see which direction they're going. And he understands that, you know, our fire department would like to have that, our police department. I mean, we need this expansion to pay for some of our stuff, and he knows that. So I don't, I don't think we were narrow pointing at one specific thing. And he understands that legislature is gonna work on that entire, for everybody, not including just us.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Council, my, uh, just a request. Let's move on to a vote. Uh, the hour is late, but, uh, my recommendation for everybody is that they continue to work with Legislative Committee. It's still in operation, um, on these, uh, important details. Um, and also if, when it, if this passes and it comes back and you've got other changes, please come forward with them in specific language so that we're ready to rock and roll, uh, when this comes back and not be tempted to put it off again. Um, and just having a very specific language to propose, um, if it's not perfect, would be very helpful. So, uh, with that, um, if the motion is clear to, uh, uh, not table, but just delay this, uh, to a future date, uh, presumably later in October, uh, if in favor of that motion, please say aye. Aye. If opposed, say nay. Nay. Voting opposition, Councilmembers Nice, Joy, uh, all other councilmembers, uh, voting in favor, uh, so, uh, the motion passes. Um, that concludes, um, item 1M for the time being, anyway, and brings us to public comment on items not on our agendas tonight. Um, we don't have any members of the public, but, uh, so, uh, we'll assume there's no public comment on non-agenda items. Uh, we do have a, an initiative, uh, from Councilmember Kennedy. Um, a copy of the amendment or the, uh, initiative form was in your packet. Um, and there's specific language in there, uh, for the motion. I'll let Councilmember Kennedy, uh, uh, state it more specifically, but, uh, at the end, um, he, he says, uh, well, Councilmember Kennedy, I'll let you, uh, present your own initiative.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this initiative is coming back to this council because we had, um, a few weeks ago, we talked about tax segment financing, funding for, um, three of the city-owned buildings. We also have, um, after discussion with Chris and, um, putting this together, the council needs to discuss funding, selling, or doing nothing at all for these four buildings. We have, um, people coming back to us asking for, um, the, uh, funding or the deferred maintenance on these buildings or going to the Tiff District or whatever. I think it's time that the council, I would like this, a vote today would be, uh, that we bring it back to a, uh, a council work session, create the direction we wanna go and bring it back to the council for a vote. But we've got to do something on it because it's sitting out there and we have, um, folks at these four buildings, um, after doing a little bit more research. Moss Mansion, we own thirty-three percent of it. The state owns the other percent of it. Um, the, uh, the, um, Depot, their tenant is moving out, which is the city, but they have the Depot and it's still in the city's name, which could be a possibility for us to give it to the Depot Association. All of, all of these have an opportunity. All I'm asking for tonight is to schedule it on a work session so we can have the open discussion of exactly what to do with these four county-owned properties, especially with the, uh, deferred maintenance on it. So that's where I'd like to go.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, Councilmember Kennedy, if I can, um, just ask for, uh, element of clarification on your motion. I'm hearing you, uh, very clearly say, uh, the direction would be for staff to put it on a future work session agenda, uh, presumably also to include some research on the, uh, the background of the four, uh, properties. Um, and then leave it for open discussion or do you, uh, this is my question. Did you want, uh, staff to make a recommendation as part of that or just come, uh, bring it back with additional information at a work session?
Bring it back with additional information and let the, uh, council come up with the proposal of what we're going to do. I think it's really important that we decide what we're going to do with these, with these buildings. This will also entail, and Chris, as we schedule this, it's probably gonna be the only agenda on that work session because each of these four entities are probably, um, going to show up and would like to have some type of input into it, and we want that. But, um, and then that gives us an opportunity to decide which direction we're going to take.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Um, is there a second to Councilmember Kennedy's motion? Uh, Councilmember Tidwell, um, and, uh, any discussion now? Uh, Councilmember Nice?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Um, so this, uh, do we, is this motion expected to resolve this in one meeting? Is that what you're, what you mentioned is to look at these, uh, items, have the meeting, have the, the people who are currently managing those here and for the council to make a decision that evening? Is that what you're expecting to see?
I'm expecting that the council will start to look at this. If we need a subsequent meeting or two or something to come back, it'll come from council direction.
Okay, okay. Uh, Mayor, another clarifying question. Um, it was stated that the current management would come in here, but would we not want to open this up to all public or anyone else who maybe want to manage and open these, uh, or manage these facilities for the city? Is that, are we lim, gonna limit this, this work session or to just the, uh, current management? Is that what your intent is, I guess, Councilmember Kennedy?
It's up to the council to whoever you would like to come to the meeting to discuss where we're gonna go. But it has to be a discussion of the council...
Sure.
...to decide the direction that they wanna go.
Okay, so, yeah, all right.
Okay, council, anything else before we vote? Councilmember Joy?
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, I guess this is a cr, uh, question for City Administrator Kukowski. We have a policy for disposal of properties. Um, and I know that we went through quite a bit with the Art House because it has conduing. It's a little bit, maybe, a little bit more, more complicated. Um, the Art House, when they came to council, they didn't seem, well, he seemed a little reluctant to try to commit into any kind of situation of taking it on, the nonprofit taking it on as a, as a, uh, as their own. So we have a policy for disposal of property. If the council decides to dispose of this property, don't we have to follow our policy? Thank you.
Councilmember, uh, Joy, Mayor and Council, yes, we do have a policy. It does have options in it and you would need to follow, or the best practice certainly would be to follow that adopted policy.
Okay, uh, council, anything else, uh, before, I'd like to move to a vote so we can get down here before nine. How about that?
One more question.
Councilmember Nice?
Yes, Chris, um, these are four properties that are owned, that are really not business-related to the city. Is there any others in the city that are like this, that we are...
Councilmember Nice, Mayor and Council, not that I'm aware of, but I have not asked the question. I could ask our team tomorrow if there are other ones. I don't think there are others, but I learned something tonight. I knew, uh, from a little bit of research that we were a part owner of the moss, but I didn't know precisely what percentage. So to answer your question, I, I'm not certain, but I will certainly ask our team if there are others.
Okay, so I guess I'm asking the movement on this. If they were to find a fifth or sixth, would you mind them bringing that information to us as well? Okay, just to clarify that. Thank you.
Okay, council, are we ready to vote?
So...
Okay, if the motion is, uh, clear, the, uh, Chris, you want some clarification?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I know that...
This falls on you, so it's very important...
Councilmember Kennedy was very clear in answering your question. You're not looking for a recommendation from staff. You're looking for us to bring you information. It also says in the initiative, this is the number one priority of the initiative list. So, um...
I, I, uh...
Priority relative...
Yeah, I did not hear that made part of the motion.
Okay, but the initiative that is, that is in the packet says...
Oh, I appreciate, you're right.
Priority relates to existing initiatives. This is number one. So I, I just want to be clear about kinda time management, priority management relative to South Park, relative to, you know, I mean, there's a lot of stuff going on. So I'm not suggesting we need years to get after this, but I wouldn't think this now bumps a whole, you know, get it on the list.
Thanks for asking for that clarification, Councilmember Kennedy. That was not part of your motion. I, I would say if you make it part of the, it's gonna generate an awful lot of conversation. Uh, so can you clarify?
No, I did not make it as a part of my motion, but I would like to see it come up sooner than later.
Sure.
Because this is a budgeting issue that keeps on coming up over and over again.
The, the other piece I'd add, just very briefly, is I think it's important, but tell me if you think I'm off base. We have some hundred million plus dollars of city-owned facilities. I, I don't want the message going to Mr. Caterino, who's leading this effort, that now these four are the most important four that we own. So I would say in this conversation of context, I've also asked them already preliminarily to give us some context of what we have facility, for facilities and where we are on prioritizing, you know, the, the management of those projects. Cuz something, you're not aware of, Mr. Kennedy, cuz you're relatively new to this table, is this effort across the organization to try to get facilities into a much more, uh, organized and deliberate maintenance system and, 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 uh, planning versus reacting to the crises as they come to us.
Correct. And the one thing is, we have to have the information to know what is the deferred maintenance, what is our, um, uh, our ownership piece, what are we responsible for, and where does the council wanna go? Do we really want to, and I put it in here, the council can discuss the funding and you can look at the funding, and then we can look at, do we sell, do we do nothing? Um, I have to say, we're not doing anything until we have the discussion at the work session. And if we decide to dispose a property, then we would follow the ordinance that we have. If we decide to do whatever, if we're going to take one of these on and have the plan in facilities to do the deferred maintenance on it, we better figure out where the money's gonna come from. Because we've had people come and want this and that and everything else, and we haven't seen the funding. I, I don't want to, um, not be able to, um, offer our, uh, priorities, public safety, the other priorities we have because we have a funding issue with some buildings we know, we own. So this can be discussed and then we may not come up with, um, council... So this can be discussed, and then we may not come up with, councilmember Nice, on that night. It may take us a little while, but maybe we put together a committee and, and come forward with recommendation after that. But I think everybody needs to be on board. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Chris, one piece of request from me would just be that we show some sort of a history of, of past city dollars going into these facilities. We've clearly had some TIF dollars, three of those four have been, TIF has been essential to the redevelopment of the depot, the ABT and the Babcock, not the Moss, but, but no general fund dollars that I know of, so these are not a, a, a big weight on our, on our budget, but they, they are a TIF impact for sure, or they have been historically in the past. Okay, anything else before we vote on this? Okay, councilmember Gulick?
Sorry. Make it quick. I just, like, I, I'm supportive of the discussion, and I, you know, I want to vote yes, I think on it, but I, I mean, I am a little concerned about just how the priorities, like, there, there are only some of the things that, that are, are stock and deal with on their plates. I, I do think the South Park pool is really essential, and that that's just, I, I don't want to divert any time from that. I think this issue of these, I, I think it's very good for us to, to set a direction for them, but I am, it hasn't been a, a big issue up until very recently, that, that this has been, it's not been a constant issue. So, and the other issue is, I think I am interested in staff recommendations. I mean, we don't, we don't always take the staff recommendation, we, we find the things, but I, I'm interested in knowing, hearing from them on, on what their position is.
And we may get to that. This is, I think, a first step, is what I would interpret it as, so. Okay, the motion is hopefully clear, it's the initiative that's before you. If in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. If opposed, nay. Voting in opposition, councilmember Joy, all other councilmembers voting in favor, so the initiative will proceed. And that concludes our meeting for tonight. Thanks, everybody. Councilmember Kennedy?
I just wanted to give you an update of, I will bring one more initiative forward, and I'll get it out to you in the next couple of weeks, and that initiative will be camping on public sidewalks. And so if you want to go down First Avenue South, you can take a look at camping on sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are adjourned.